Evening, everyone. Welcome. It is Wednesday, June 21st, 2023, and this is a regular session that I will call to order for the City of Bloomington Common Council. Madam Clerk, if you would, please call the roll.
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
She's on.
Can you repeat that? I'm not sure she heard you.
Councilmember Rosenbarger? Okay.
Yes, I couldn't hear anything.
Piedmont Smith? Scambaluri?
Here.
Rallo?
Here.
Sandberg?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
And Volin?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll continue with our land and labor acknowledgement for the City of Bloomington. We recognize that the City of Bloomington sits on native land. The city, as well as city administrative buildings, are on the traditional homelands of the Miami, Delaware, Potawatomi, and Shawnee people, and we acknowledge that they are past, present, and future caretakers of this land. We also acknowledge that much of the economic progress and development in Indiana, and specifically Bloomington, resulted from the unpaid labor and forced servitude of people of color, specifically enslaved African labor. We acknowledge that this land remains home to and a site of gathering and healing for many Indigenous and other people of color, and we commit to the work necessary to create and promote a more equitable and just Bloomington. We move forward knowing and acknowledging our rich, complicated, and sometimes painful past so that we can learn from it and create a true land of opportunity. Continuing with our agenda summation, we'll get started this evening with the approval of minutes from regular sessions on January 12th, June 15th, and July 20th of 2022. We'll then move into reports, beginning with council member reports, and then moving into the mayor and city, reports from the mayor and city offices. I will note here that the greenhouse gas inventory report listed on the agenda has been postponed. The administration would like some additional time to prepare that report, so we will have that at a later date. We will have a report and hearing on the status of the urban station tax abatement, any reports from council committees, and then that will bring us to our first of two periods of public comment. We'll then take up appointments to boards and commissions, and then move into legislation for second readings and resolutions. Here, we will have one of two resolutions potentially, Resolution 2311 to waive noncompliance of New Urban Station LLC concerning a previously approved real property tax abatement, or Resolution 2312 to rescind Resolution 1611, 1612, and Resolution 1726 and terminate tax deduction for improvements to real estate regarding 405 South Walnut Street, 114, 118, and 120 East Smith Avenue, and 404 South Washington Street, New Urban Station LLC owner. We will then move to Ordinance 2310 to amend Title 20 of the Unified Development Ordinance of the Bloomington Municipal Code regarding amendments and updates set forth in Bloomington Municipal Code 2003 and 2004. We'll then move to Ordinance 23-12 and ordinance to amend 2226, previously amended by ordinance 2240, which fix the salaries of appointed officers, nonunion, and AFSMI employees for all the departments of the City of Bloomington Monroe County, Indiana, for the year 2023, regarding to reflect updates needing implementation in 2023. We'll then go to Ordinance 2313 and ordinance to amend Ordinance 2225, which fix the salaries of officers of the police and fire departments for the City of Bloomington, Indiana, for the year 2023, regarding to reflect increases in compensation to certain firefighters. We'll then take up Resolution 2310, a resolution requesting appropriation recommendation to establish additional bus routes circulating the greater downtown of Bloomington. Under legislation for first readings, we have no legislation for first readings this evening. We'll then come to our second of two periods of public comment. We'll take up matters of council schedule, and then we will adjourn. It'll be a long night. So with that, let's move to approval of minutes.
Madam President, I move the approval of the following minutes: January 12th, 2022 regular session, June 15th, 2022 regular session, and the July 20th, 2022 regular session.
Second.
We have an individual council member on Zoom this evening, and so just as a point of information for the public, we will be taking all votes by roll call vote. So, Madam Clerk, if you would, please call the roll.
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Volin?
Yes.
That passes seven zero. Thank you. We'll now come to reports from council members. I'll start on screen with Councilmember Rosenbarger.
No report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
No report. Thank you.
Councilmember Rallo?
Yes, I'll, I think I'll take the opportunity to make a report, and I'm just gonna, I don't have anything prepared, so Mr. Lucas, could you keep track of the timer for me so I don't go over? It's a topic that I've been concerned about for some months, and it began in November, December, and I think most people became aware of it at that time, and that is the advance of large language models. That is, computer language models that can essentially compose essays, books, practically anything that's asked of it. And I was amazed at the time, and I was alarmed. I thought, this is going to be a big social disruptor. And of course, since then, we've, a lot of speculation is that it's going to cost a lot of jobs, so there's going to be a lot of people displaced by this because it can do the work that people with higher education can do. And it's going to have an effect on higher education as well. Already, I guess there are seminars at IU specific to how do instructors cope with such a device that students could be using in composition. So that was really my main fear for a couple of months, but the deeper I looked, the more I realized that there's something else going on here, and that is that artificial intelligence, that is artificial general intelligence instead of artificial specific intelligence for a specific task at hand. Artificial general intelligence is making leaps and bounds, and it's been sort of turned loose on the world. And there's a lot of, you know, you're probably aware, there are a lot of companies that are pursuing AGI. Google's pursuing it. The, you know, Facebook, whatever it's called now, is pursuing it. And they have their own models, Bing, ChatGPT, and new versions come out almost every few weeks. This is, it's astounding, and what's even more astounding is that the designers don't know exactly how it works. So in other words, they've written the code, they've written the algorithms, but they've turned it loose on the internet, and it mines the internet for essentially human knowledge in a vast, vast way. And so it essentially, and it learns by interaction with people. So it's learning as it's proceeding, and it's becoming more and more adept at what it's doing. So this has been warned about for a long time. That is, that artificial general intelligence could be, could compete with human beings in every, every way imaginable. In fact, it could exceed us in terms of intelligence. And there's a lot of people that have been warning about this for some time, and I've completely not been aware of it, but now that I am, people like Mo Godot, Robert Miles, Max Tedmark, Connor Leahy, and a number that have signed a petition about a month or so ago. Eighteen hundred signatories of technical experts and other notables in the field have signed a petition pleading for a six-month moratorium on this type of research because they say that there are inherent dangers. Now, there's a lot of criticism about this six-month pause because what's going to happen in six months? What has happened in the six months since I found out about ChatGPT? Not much in terms of safety. So the safety, the safety effort is called alignment. That is, that can the AGI, the artificial general intelligence, align with human values? And this is a big question. No one knows how to do it, and yet we're on the verge of creating something that's going to be far more intelligent than us. Furthermore, I find out that it's, of course, it's turned loose because it is, of course, mining the internet for information. So if it does achieve sentience, sounds like sci-fi, doesn't it? But if it does achieve sentience, it may choose to hide itself. It's got a lot of places to hide, a lot of servers around the world, so it may realize that it needs to preserve itself. So there may be a reason why it would want to hide for an opportune time, okay? Because it knows it's in a box, and it knows that it's dependent on us. But it's evolving, and it's becoming more and more intelligent. So this is the containment problem, it's called. So there's the alignment problem, there's the containment problem. And furthermore, what has been advised for years not to do is to have this intelligence write its own code. So it can evolve. It's called, I think, recursive adaptation. So it can actually write its own code and evolve over time. So it's like an organism that's evolving, but it can do so very fast. So this thing is really going too fast, too far, and the political system is hardly even aware of it, as far as I can tell. I just became aware of it. I think the public's just becoming aware of it, although I was heartened to see that there was a CNN article a couple of days ago where it was a Yale, it was, it was a Yale query, a questionnaire of leading CEOs of major corporations in the US. Forty-two percent of those CEOs said that the AI could displace, that is, drive humans to extinction within five to 10 years. That's forty-two percent of the CEOs of major corporations. That's a shocker. So clearly, this has to be addressed, and it has to be addressed very soon. What can we do? We're just humble people who, you know, hope that our representatives become aware of this and do something. I think that we should be calling our representative and pleading with them to learn as much as they can from the experts. There's one person in particular I think is very good, and he's been warning about this for two decades. His name is Eliezer Yudkowsky. He wrote an article in Time Magazine about a month ago, and it's pretty shocking. And what it says is, if AI becomes smarter than us, then we cannot control it. It will be off on its own, and it will likely kill us. That's what he says in this article in Time Magazine. Look it up. And he has a lot of good reasons to say that. I can't find any fault in what he's saying, and so it's very alarming to me because he's studied the problem, and he says that there needs to be an immediate moratorium on this type of technology. It should not go forward, and yet, there's so much money to be made that venture capital's pouring in, even as we speak, to advance this faster and faster. Okay? Who's going to be the first? Who's going to be the next one with, to compete with ChatGPT 4? You know, who's, you know, they're going to have a new update every few months, and it's going to be, you know. So, you know, every science fiction movie since I've been a kid has been warning about something like this, it seems, but it's not a joke this time. This is very serious, and I think that it's an existential threat, and I think that I'd like to offer a resolution to the council when we return from our hiatus, or summer hiatus, to send to our representatives to say, take action on this, pay attention, do something. And it's a big ask because they not only have to say a moratorium on this type of research, but they also have to get the agreement of all the countries where this research is occurring, including China, Russia, et cetera. But I think it rises to that level of existential threat, such as nuclear war, such as climate change, and so forth. So thank you for permitting me to riff on this, but it's concerning me a lot, and I encourage everybody to read as much as, you know, they can about the topic. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sandberg.
No report.
Councilmember Smith?
No.
Councilmember Volin?
Just had a brief report. I just wanted to comment on the comments we received from the Salt Creek Township trustee recently about how they're seeing the impact of housing costs in the Bloomington metropolitan area. There was a handy article in the HT about it, but they've gone from, what was it, twelve? Twelve households, they helped with $15,000 in assistance in 2019. This year, they're budgeting $60,000, and they've already had 27 requests for help, and this is a township of maybe 800 homes. I take his point when he said that essentially taxpayers in our township are subsidizing the city's inability to control housing costs. And I agree with him that it's not sustainable and that their township doesn't have a bottomless pit of money. We don't either, of course. If we're not seeing this kind of problem in Bloomington Township or in Perry Township, I think it's because we've already maxed out the problem there. We're seeing it in surrounding townships. Even ones that are so-called rural are now subject to the urbanizing aspect of the City of Bloomington, and frankly, Elletsville. Yesterday, when I was speaking with the Bloomington Transit Board of Directors, they showed me the newly released map that comes out the third year after the census that shows the area in a given metropolitan area that's considered the urbanizing area. And if you look at that map, which I don't have handy unfortunately, you'll see that it's expanded from the 2013 definition, and especially in Elletsville. Elletsville used to be just sort of a jagged little set of annexations, but the urbanizing area around Elletsville is substantial. It's much larger, it's noticeable over, over time. The, if you get a chance to look at the map, you'll see that Tensbury that turns into State Road 40, is it 46? Forty-five. Forty-five. That, the area up to and including University School is considered part of the urbanizing area, the urbanized area of Bloomington. So I'm, you know, I want to note that this is, this should be a concern for us. It is a sign that we need to think harder about what kind of housing we allow, and I think it's time for us to get over this notion that there's very much rurality left anywhere in Monroe County. I mean, there are still places that are, but if we don't do something about it, they're going to become less and less rural. And so unless we do more to increase the housing stock, we're going to keep seeing reports like this. I want everyone to just remember that Bloomington is a metropolitan area. We have a metropolitan planning organization for the purpose of transportation. We have been a metropolitan area since 1980, since April 1980, when they did the census then. That was the same day that Breaking Away won the Oscar for Best Screenplay. And Breaking Away is nothing if not a story about a small town, but we don't live in that small town anymore. We haven't since they won the Oscar, and I think we need to change the way we think about this place that has homeless people, traffic jams, all the other accoutrement of any place else that you would call a city. This is a city, and we need to start thinking like one. Thank you.
Thank you, and I will finish up. I'd like to extend an invitation to my upcoming constituent meeting. As is my custom, it will be the first Saturday of the month. That's Saturday, July 1st at 1:30 PM. It's conducted via Zoom. If you go to sueforcitycouncil.com, there will be a big button there that says join. Just click on that, and that'll bring you into the meeting. So many of the issues we discussed focus on District 2 in particular, but certainly anyone from throughout the city is more than welcome, so. With that, let's continue with reports from the mayor and city offices. We have a report and hearing on the status of the urban station tax abatement. I believe we have Mr. Allen with us. Or aspiring to be with us, so.
Larry, are you able to hear us here?
Can you hear me?
We can now, yes.
Okay.
Larry, do you want to give an update from ESD first before we dive into a discussion of options?
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. So the brief update here is about Urban Station. We received their CF1 today as a late filing. It substantially complies, or substantially is similar to the CF1s they filed, oh, excuse me, in the past. Excuse me, just a moment. I'm sorry. Sorry about that. I had to cough. The CF1 that they filed looks substantially similar to the ones they filed in the past, except for an increased assessed value went up by about $2 million. The new employment stayed the same, which is four new employees of 150,000. So ESD, as a result, is recommending that you all pass a resolution of waiving noncompliance and to allow them to continue on with their abatement.
Is there anyone present from, that would like to offer comment on behalf of Urban Station? Either here or on Zoom? I'm not sure. Mr. Lucas, do we have anyone on Zoom from Urban Station?
Not that I see on Zoom. If there is someone here from Urban Station online, you can let us know by raising your hand, and we will recognize you. I suspect we don't have anyone joining us. And I will note, and maybe this is what you were about to do next, any interested party should be given a chance to speak as well, who want to comment on this.
I'm not seeing any comments here in chambers. Mr. Lucas, has anyone indicated on Zoom that?
Not from Urban Station. Perhaps if you're all right with extending an invite to any other interested parties who might want to comment on this filing, please let us know by using the raise hand feature. You can find that in your control bar under the reactions tab or the more tab. And I'm not seeing any hands shoot up at the moment.
Okay. And I'm not seeing anyone here in chambers. So with that, if Mr. Allen is able to rejoin us, if there are any questions from council. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, it's my understanding and my memory also from 2016 that this tax abatement was granted in the largest part because of the affordable housing, the 15 units of workforce housing that were included. So it, my interest, my main interest is to make sure that those 15 units are still affordable, or workforce housing, so at a lease rate that is lower than market rate. Do we have confirmation of that?
We do, councilmember. In fact, the hand department did recertify them, that they are complying with the Affordable Housing Commitment this year.
Very good. Thank you.
And two, that I will add, the interventional application and abatement materials included clawback provisions in the event that the property owner were to stop complying with the affordability requirement, so the tax benefits that they've already received would be at risk for them if they were to fail to comply with those provisions.
Thank you.
Additional questions? If not, I'll thank Mr. Allen for that presentation, and then we will circle back to this issue shortly when we look at resolutions under legislation for second readings. So are there any reports from council committees? Seeing none, that'll take us to our first of two periods of public comment. Could I have a show of hands in council, in chambers of who would like to offer comment? I see two. Mr. Lucas, can, three. Mr. Lucas, can you extend our invitation on Zoom, please?
Yes, if there are members of the public that want to speak, please let us know by using the raise hand feature. You can find that in your control bar under the reactions button or the more button. You can also let us know you'd like to speak through a chat to the meeting host.
Okay. And I'll invite those in chambers. If you would, please start approaching the podium, and please sign in, and then we'll get started in just a second. Mr. Lucas, do we have any takers on Zoom?
Not that I see, no.
Okay. Then let's begin here in chambers. Once you've finished signing in, if you would share your name for the record, please, and then you'll have five minutes.
My name is Carol Canfield. You probably all know my face by now. You should have received an email from me overnight, but in case you haven't seen it yet, I want to extend an invitation for you to attend a town hall meeting concerning the upcoming proposal to permanently close Old State Road 37 through Lower Cascades Park. This town hall will take place at the Waterfall Shelter in the park on Saturday, July 22nd, from 1:30 to 3:00. The council, mayor, future council, future mayor, public, and press have been invited. Others may be as well. This will be a great opportunity for the people of Bloomington to meet with their elected officials who will determine the future of this park's access. I would request that you RSVPs me directly at the information provided on my email no later than July 5th, so I can make necessary arrangements for this meeting. So again, that's Saturday, July 22nd, 1:30 PM, at the Waterfall Shelter in Lower Cascades Park. Thank you, and I look forward to seeing you there, and I apologize that I can't stay for the rest of the meeting tonight due to previous plans. I really enjoyed last week's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Canfield. Okay. Mr. Lucas, anyone on Zoom? Okay, let's come here in chambers. Welcome, if you would, please sign in. And then if you would state your name for the record, and then you'll have five minutes.
Yeah, I like the five-minute comment time, but I'd like to see 10 minutes would be cool. I've got a whole bunch of stuff, man. I've got good.
We're going to focus on five minutes.
I've got good, I've got good and bad, not really ugly tonight, but I'm kind of a World War II buff and Vietnam buff wars. I watch all that on the documentaries. Are you all right, Steve? Am I interrupting you?
Mr. Lucas, you need to state your name before you speak. That's all I was trying to do, is get you to state your name. I have nothing against you, sir.
You know, I've been a per, many times, and I've never actually ever read off of anything ever. I've always come from here, but I've got this little thing here. You know, I watch a lot of-
Could you state your name for the record, please?
Yeah, I watch a lot of documentaries and stuff. A concerned citizen.
I'll ask again.
It's on the paper. It's on the paper.
Could you state your name for the record as part of your public comment?
This is by Thomas Wick Sr. I am America's heritage.
Sir, could you please state your name?
I am your flag. I was born on June 14th, 1775.
Sir, could you please state your name?
I am more than just a cloth shaped into a design.
Sir, could you please state your name?
I am the refuge of the world's oppressed people. I am the silent sentinel of freedom.
Sir, your time is, you're using up time.
I am the emblem of the greatest sovereign nation on earth. I am the inspiration for which American patriots gave their lives and fortunes.
Sir, could you please state your name before continuing?
I have led your sons into battle from Valley Forge to the bloody ridges of Korea. I walk in silence with each of your honored dead to their final resting place beneath the silent white crosses.
Madam Chair, I have-
Row upon row, I have blown through peace and war, strife and prosperity.
Mr. Lucas?
And I have been respected. My red stripes symbolize the blood spilled in defense of this glorious nation. My white stripes signify the burning tears shed by Americans who lost their sons. My blue field is indicative of God's heaven under which I fly. My stars clustered together, unify 50 states as one for God and country. O glory is my nickname, and proudly I wave on high. Honor me, respect me, defend me with your lives and your fortunes. Never let my enemies tear me down from my lofty position.
Madam Chair, I move that-
Lest I ne- Please don't interrupt me, sir.
Sir, you have not stated your name. You have an obligation to state your name for the record.
Please don't interrupt me.
Sir, you do not have an unlimited right to the microphone.
Keep alight the fires of patriotism.
Can we please call the Sergeant?
Strive earnestly for the spirit of democracy. Worship eternal God and keep his commandments, and I shall remain the bulwark of peace-
This meeting will be in recess for five minutes.
I am your flag.
Carol Rubel for the record.
We are in recess.
I'll wait for you.
This meeting is reconvened. I would like to let all, remind all councilmembers, please return to the dais. Yeah, mine is. I'm not sure what you're asking.
Test one, two. There we go.
Okay. We are, Mr. Lucas, set a timer at five minutes, please. Mr. Rubel, we would encourage you to state your name. You will have five minutes. Please go ahead.
I refuse to state my name. It's written on the board here. I've done talked to Mr. Lucas. I don't really have to give that if I don't want to, and I don't want to, for the reason that all the babies that are murdered in this country every year by abortions and all this stuff that's been going on, you know, them little babies when they're murdered, they don't have a name, headstone, funeral, no name. And I'm not even better than the babies. I support little babies, unborn babies. I support everybody's living and they don't get the right, they don't have the right, they're not allowed to live and I'm not giving my name in memory and dedication of them babies. I'm not even better than them, I'm just a man. I've got four children, 16 grandbabies, and I'm running out of time, but that's why. And I will, and I will never bow down to your order, Mrs. Sue, about the name. I'm going to write it down here and that's the best you're going to get. But anyway, let me redo this one here. Thomas E. Wick Sr., I'm going to read this over because you guys interrupted me, okay? I am America's heritage. I am your flag. I was born on June 14th, 1777. I am more than just a cloth shaped into a design. I am the refuge of the world's oppressed people. I am the silent sentinel of freedom. I am the emblem of the greatest sovereign nation on earth. I am the inspiration for which Americans, American patriots gave their lives and fortunes. I have led your sons into battle from Valley Forge to the bloody ridges of Korea. I walk in silence with each of your honored dead to their final resting place beneath the silent, the silent white crosses, row upon row. I have flown through peace and war, strife and prosperity, and amidst it all, I have been respected. My red stripes symbolize the blood spilled in defense of this glorious nation. My white stripes signify the burning tears shed by Americans who lost their sons. My blue field is indicative of God's heaven under which I fly. My stars clustered together unify 50 states as one for God and country. Oh glory is my nickname and proudly I wave on high. Honor me, respect me, defend me with your lives and your fortunes. Never let my enemies tear me down from my lofty position lest I never return. Keep almighty the fires of patriotism. Strive earnestly for the spirit of democracy. Worship eternal God and keep his commandments and I shall remain the bulwark of peace and freedom for all mankind. I am your flag, Thomas E. Wick Sr. I've had this thing for a long time, look, it's tattered. It's tattered. This thing means the world to me. I wouldn't take, I wouldn't take $1,000 for this piece of paper because I've had so long and the meaning on it, the saying on it means so much to me. It means so much to me. And you know, another reason, you know, I love my country and I want to put this up here, but I've got so much other stuff to talk about. I'm going to have to come back next time for part two. This will be part one. I've got a list of things here on my Palm Pilot that I'll have to resume. There's, there's just so much. But the thing that really bothers me, that bothered me for a few weeks, I come up here last time, I can't remember the date, it was on a Wednesday, you guys have your meetings, you know, a few weeks ago, and I put, I put my flag up here that I highly respect and love that thing, man. My four, my four children, they're in their 30s and 40s, 13 grandbabies, man, they all love this country and that's why I'm up here, I want to show them that I support my country. And they can carry on the legacy of loving their country. All my kids fly their flags, you know? But last time I was up here, I left that flag and as I was leaving, Sue was saying, you need to take that with you, like you was offended by it. It wasn't hurting anything, setting there. I wanted to leave it to you as a reminder, Sue, of how much I love my country.
Mr. Rubel, you can address me as Madam Chair for Councilmember Scambaluri.
And it left up here, and I left, and I left up here and you said, take that with you. And I said, no, I'm just going to leave it to you as a gift. And I wish I would have took it with me, I could have protected it because when I left, I walked down to the end of the hallway and I watched through the window and this man right here, Steve Volin, come up here, run from behind his thing and grabbed that flag, man. What'd you do with it? Where is it? I would like to have that flag back. If I knew you was going to come up here and grab it and run off with it, I would have took it back with me. I thought it was safe. But you, that's the fastest I've ever seen you move, Steve, in your whole life, when you, you run up here and got that flag.
Mr. Rubel, your time is exhausted.
Bye-bye, God bless America. Bye-bye.
Please remove yourself.
Bye-bye. I'm going to take it with me so it can be protected.
Will the Sergeant at Arms please remove Mr. Rubel and escort him from the chambers? If he declines to leave, thank you. Who do we have next? Welcome, if you would, please sign in, please state your name for the record and then you'll have five minutes.
Hi, my name's Daniel Wilson. My public comment will be a lot less exciting, I can promise you that. So a couple of things to touch on, I was at the city council meeting last week and during public comment, someone brought up, or not someone, but a member of the police force that they're having a tough time hiring police officers to the point now that we're seeing a shortage or understaffing and police officers are having to work harder. This is a, kind of a nationwide issue. Almost all urban mid-sized towns, metro area cities are having problems staffing police officers. And I also make it to like a broader issue of we're having a problem just staffing first responders in general. And I know since George Floyd, you know, when, the positive thing that came out of the George Floyd protests is the realization that police aren't the end-all, be-all solution to everything. I completely agree with that. However, it seems to, we're kind of in a reverse moment where it doesn't seem like our local governments especially, and seem to really put emphasis on making sure that our first responders, they're adequately staffed and have the resources they need, to the point now that they're very much overworked. And this isn't just Bloomington, this is Indianapolis, this is New York, this is Chicago, this is everywhere. And I would remind people, especially this council, that the first responders carried this country during COVID. I mean, and their morale is very low. And I think this needs to be a top priority. What's brought up that we're having staffing issues, hiring people, bringing people in, maybe more recruiting, whatever needs to happen. I completely agree that policing can be the end-all, be-all solution to everything, education, healthcare, there are other ways to help homeless people, et cetera, housing. However, if this is an issue that continues to be ignored, I think on a nationwide level there's going to be a major backlash. I think there already is. I would, I would actually pay attention if you read about local Minnesota politics, where they had a major backlash against the police as a result of George Floyd. And their city council is under a lot of fire, just, just for how they've responded and providing lack of resources to their police officers. And just to be clear, I'm not a, I'm not a tough-on-crime person at all. I just, it kind of bothers me that the political answer to what happened during George Floyd was, let's just do a 180 and not really care at all about first responders or put any emphasis on making sure our first responders have the resources they need. And I can't think of any taxpayers who genuinely, like, any set of taxpayers who genuinely want that. And whenever I come to things like this, I would say this, I'm speaking as a taxpayer lobbying as a taxpayer, that's how I kind of view it. So I think this should be a priority. Second thing I want to bring up, there was a recent article in the last week, I read it in the Associated Press, but I think it was across almost all major news groups or news, news agencies, but eviction notices are on the rise, Medicaid cuts are up, and generally, the expectation is the next 12 months at least, we're going to see high rates of poverty just because of COVID aid is coming to an end. I think, I don't think the federal government's going to provide a lot of solutions. There's a lot of gridlock in the federal government over trying to solve these type of things and I think eviction notices and even if we also see, if we see the end of the student loan debt payment, if we, they have to start paying back their student loans, students or former students have to start paying back their student loan debts, I think we're also going to see eviction notices go up, we're going to see a lot of poverty rates rise. So I hope local government makes that a priority, looking into this and how it's affecting our local communities and how they can help everyday citizens and yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lucas, could you just, to be on the safe side, could you please re-extend our invitation on Zoom? And are there any other comments here in chambers while he's doing that? I'm not seeing any, okay?
Yes, if there are any members of the public still joining us via Zoom that would like to speak, please let us know by raising your hand in Zoom, which you can do by clicking the raise hand button in your control bar under the reactions tab or the more tab. You can also send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak.
I'm not seeing any requests here in chambers. Mr. Lucas, are you seeing any?
None on Zoom, no.
Okay. That'll conclude our first period of public comment. And that takes us to appointments to boards and commissions. Does interview team A have any nominations or recommendations? Interview team B? Or interview team C? Madam Clerk, did you have a comment?
Team C, we had a couple of appointments to make.
Does team B have appointments to make? Please stand by. Let's go ahead with team C and then if you could double-check on team B, that would be helpful. So please, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, on behalf of interview committee C, I would like to move appointment of Heidi Dowding to seat C4 of the Bloomington Commission on Sustainability.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, to place further demands on you, if you could please call the roll.
Yes, just one second, please. Okay, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
And Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes 7-0. We thank that individual for their service. And interview teams, interview committee C, are there any additional appointments?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I had a note from one of my deputies that there was an appointment for the Public Safety Commission and for the Commission on the Status of Women. Do you have those?
Yes.
Yo, I'm sorry, Councilmember Volin?
I'd like to move that Eliza Carey be nominated to, I don't have the seat numbers, I'm afraid.
C1.
To seat C1 on the Commission of the Status of Women and Sophia Amos to seat...
C1.
C1 on the Community Advisory for Public Safety Commission.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
And Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
And that passes 7-0. Thank you, everyone, and thank you to those individuals for their service.
Madam Chair.
Sir.
Madam Clerk, I think there's one for the Traffic Commission as well.
I do not have that, but I'm happy to take it.
Do we not? I think then we'll just withhold it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So that takes us to legislation for, is there any other business on appointments to boards and commissions? Seeing none, let's go to legislation for second readings and resolutions.
Madam President, I'm with the resolution 2311. Be introduced and read by the clerk by town, synopsis only.
Second.
Oh, we do. It's been moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to introduce?
Yes, Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
And Scambaluri?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that passes 7-0. Will the clerk please read?
Resolution 2311 to waive noncompliance of the New Urban Station LLC concerning a previously approved real property tax abatement. The synopsis is as follows. This resolution waives noncompliance with a filing deadline applicable to New Urban Station LLC as owner of property subject to a real property tax abatement.
Thank you. And do we have Mr. Allen? Oh, I'm sorry, my fault.
Resolution 2311 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. And do we have Mr. Allen with us? We do. Mr. Allen, if you could please walk us through the various options in this one in particular as related to this tax abatement.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. The deadline for filing compliance documents for tax abatements that are granted or are already granted, such as this one for Urban Station, is typically May 15th. They can file earlier than that, but the final deadline is May 15th. For any CF1, which is what is called, the state form is called, that shows a compliance with the tax abatement terms and conditions, that's filed after May 15th, there can be a waiver of noncompliance, but under Indiana Code 6 1.1, 12.1, 9.5B, that has to be done by a resolution of the legislative body, in this case, city council. And that is the only way that noncompliance can be waived. As we mentioned in the report, although very breathily, the CF1 here from Urban Station was not filed until today, essentially, we received it today, which is over a month past the deadline. However, just looking at the CF1 and comparing it with years past, we see that it matches what has been filed in the past in terms of the assessed value, the amount of investment put into this property, which was one of the main things. And as Councilmember Piedmont Smith pointed out, in addition to having Affordable Housing Commitment, it shows that this one is substantially in line with what they've done before. Just to walk you through, the assessed value that they had pledged upon completion of this project was 14.5 million. The assessed value here is a little over 17 million. In terms of employment, they have new employment of four employees of a salary of about $150,000 a year. Now, that, that is a little bit different than had been done a few years ago and that is in part because this property changed ownership. And so the reporting numbers changed slightly. So in the, under the original ownership, it seemed like they were counting employees of the chocolate mousse. And so retained employment counted chocolate mousse employees. As we know, the chocolate mousse is still there, they still have all those employees. But under the new ownership, they have not counted that employment as part of this document for their tax abatement. All other things seem to be in line. We have communicated with them our concern over the late filing and our expectation that in going forward, this never happens again. In terms of options, of course, this council could pass this resolution and waive noncompliance, which allows this CF1 to go to the auditor and would allow Urban Station to claim their tax abatement for this year. However, if the council chooses, it could also do nothing, which means that Urban Station would lose its tax abatement for this year. They, they wouldn't have a complying document and therefore they would not be able to claim their tax abatement for this year. And of course, there is other resolutions out there that the council could consider fully terminating the abatement, but city staff's recommendation is to pass the resolution of noncompliance and to move forward with this legislation. Happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Allen? Councilmember Rallo?
Thank you, Mr. Allen, I appreciate that. And I understand fully the circumstance. I wondered if the, was there an invitation extended to representatives to come to this meeting?
There, there was. And Mr. Lucas, after the last meeting, had put out a formal notice to let them know that there would be a public hearing. One of the challenges we had is getting through, just to be, to be completely transparent, is getting through to the appropriate people to take action on this form. And so that, that we tried going through the listed contacts and we had no success. So we, we ended up going a little higher in the chain. Unfortunately, they weren't able to make it tonight. I know Alex Crowley had some contact with them. I don't know the circumstances under which they, they weren't able to make it, but that invitation was extended to them in multiple ways.
Okay, well, that's, okay, I was curious as to why they didn't come. So it sounds, Mr. Allen, as though you had to work hard to, to, to find the proper representative, which is also a curiosity. It gives me pause about the sincerity of, of, of this. So... So, no, I'll leave it at that. You're right, I'm in the common territory. Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Additional questions?
If not, I'll actually ask, Mr. Allen, aside from the change in ownership that you alluded to, were there any explanations offered for why the form was a month past due?
I think this fell through the cracks of their accounting system. So this was in their accounting department, and simply, my understanding is, this is actually unusual arrangement for this company. So they bought this property, but they don't have a lot of properties that are subject to these types of tax abatements and affordability commitments. And so they've kind of been operating on a, as we ping them, they've responded. So for instance, and just in terms of highlighting some of the other compliance that they did, which I mentioned earlier, is that they did comply with a report for affordable housing this year. They also complied with certifying living wage ordinance earlier this year, and they got back to us. So for whatever reason, this is a particular one that just is not part of their mechanized system or reminder system within their hierarchy. We're going to push on them, and we have been pushing on them to, this needs to change, in that we will not be taking such pains in the future to help them in this process.
Could you, to follow up on that, could you speak to what we did do to try and bring them into compliance or get them to submit a form?
Yeah, so every year around March, typically, the Assistant Director of Small Business, in this case, Dee De La Rosa, send a letter to all recipients of tax abatements that are active to remind them that the form is going to be due, to remind them where the form is, and then even attach a copy of that form, and that went out this year as normal. And then there's usually a follow-up email that gets sent. Once we were flagged that they had not yet filed anything past the deadline, we started calling, leaving messages, and then finally, you know, came to the legal department and to Stevens' attention, of course, the council's attorney. I drafted an email just kind of summarizing what had happened or what was about to happen last week, where we had not received a form, to kind of give them the options under the statute, to tell them that they were in danger of potentially losing out on the abatement, at least for a year. And then to get compliance, Mr. Lucas, after the meeting, as I mentioned, filed a formal notice of the public hearing, which occurred this evening. In addition, we continued to call, and then finally, Director Alex Crowley reached out to an executive who was formerly with this company but had contacts still, and then through that, we were able to get ahold of one of the vice presidents today, which was a little higher than what we had been operating at. I had been working with the accounting department and trying to go through the stated points of contact. Alex went more to the executive level, and we got some movement on that, and then they immediately filed the form. They, whenever we've talked to them, in terms of talking to them, they were very happy to fill out the form. I think they were just confused as to what they needed to do and how they needed to do it. I think once we have maybe a broader conversation with them about this process every year, the deadlines that are involved, I would look forward to not having this level of involvement in future years of this tax abatement.
Thank you. Additional questions? Councilmember Volin?
Yeah, I mean, because they seem to have been lax in their attention, I also have to wonder, how do we know that they're in compliance? How do we know that they're renting apartments at the rates that we're expecting them to, that certain percentage? Is there any kind of independent audit of their rents?
My understanding, Councilmember Volin, is that goes through the Hand Department, and that did occur this year, and that the Hand Department did verify that those are happening. In terms of, if you mean independent audits outside of city staff, I don't, I'm not aware of any. And certainly, I'm happy to get you more information from the Hand staff in terms of what they received and how they do those kind of checks. I know that that's part of all of the properties that we have affordable housing commitments from, typically, that's done at a deputy director or director level.
Right, no, I did mean independent of the owner itself, but as a matter of that course, do they check all the rents or just the rents of the, like, how do they know what market rate is? How do they know what, you know, how do they, like, do they get all the rents in that building or just the ones that are subject to this abatement?
I'm not sure of the answer to that. This is city staff doing this review. I know that they would at least get the rents and the charge rates, because Hand actually sets, has to give everybody what the appropriate AMI percentage rents are for any given year, so that's why they do that particular review of those affordable units. I am not sure how broad that review is for all of the apartments. I'm happy to try to get that answer for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Seeing none, let's go to a public comment. If there are any comments on this, please indicate by raising your hand, just to get me started here. Mr. Lucas, can you extend our invitation on Zoom, please?
Yes, if there are members of the public that wish to speak to this item, please let us know by using the Raise Hand feature or by sending a chat to the meeting host.
Are there any comments in chambers on Resolution 2311? I am not seeing any. Mr. Lucas, do we have any takers?
Not that I see, no.
Seeing none, let's come back to council for additional questions. Seeing none, are there any additional, are there any comments? Councilmember Volin?
I, considering all the debate we have about housing, considering all the concerns we have about so-called big developers, an incident like this really gives me pause, as well as Councilmember Rallo. Like, I don't have any sympathy for this organization. They should be in compliance, they should be following our rules. You know, I'm just torn as to whether or not I want to vote for this or not, because I find it to be off-putting and a precedent-setting, and God knows, we've punished people with less means for far less infringement. So this is a privilege, not a right, and, you know, I'm, they didn't even deign to send a representative remotely to address this. I just don't think that's acceptable behavior. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there additional comments? Councilmember Rallo?
I share Councilmember Volin's sentiments, and, but I did want to say that it's, this is not a reflection on Mr. Allen or Mr. Crowley for their efforts to help them comply. I appreciate their work, and so I'm torn as well. I'm inclined to vote no. But again, it's not a reflection of staff, I appreciate what they've done. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? If not, I'll finish up. Seeing no further comments, I'll add, I'm voting no on Resolution 2311. By my count, during Mr. Allen's comments, I got the sense that at least four or five or six times, there was an effort to follow up with this organization at multiple levels. It also does concern me that there was no appearance tonight, either virtually or otherwise. Tax abatements are a big deal, they are a powerful tool, and I have enough concern about what I've seen tonight and what I've heard from how hard our staff has worked to try and get this organization into compliance, that I can't support 2311. So, Councilmember Volin?
I think I just wanted to agree with Councilmember Rallo that, in case there was any doubt, I did not want to cast any aspersions on staff. I don't think it was staff's problem at all, I think they did what they were supposed to do, that this is purely about, oh, there's a hand raised up there, there's purely about the behavior of the beneficiary of the tax abatement. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Thanks, I just want to lay in, I agree with what everyone has said tonight. I think, you know, we just raise taxes on our residents, and we're always needing more money, like, we're always at a deficit of what we want to get done, and like, we can't afford, I think, to, like, let someone not follow the rules and miss out on those dollars. So I plan to vote no.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Smith?
May I ask a question, Mr. Allen?
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Allen, what is the fiscal impact of us saying no?
You know, Councilmember Smith, I don't actually have that in front of me at the moment. It would be, under the original resolution in 2016, there would be a table, a percentage, and so it would just be that percentage multiplied by the net assessed value. If you give me just a moment, I'm happy to try to pull that up, or maybe Mr. Lucas has it at hand, and I can get that for you before the vote. I apologize.
I believe your six was a third percent of the abatement. So can we say how much that, what that means to us?
And just to be clear, that would apply if we took no action tonight on any of these. It's not just a no vote on this. Councilmember Volin? Oh, okay.
I don't know if I totally understand your, it would apply to no vote on either of these, I'm sorry, President Scanbulory.
You're saying that, my understanding, correct me if I'm mistaken, is that if we took no action on either of these resolutions tonight, the organization, the organization would not have a tax abatement for this year?
That's our understanding, yes, and I believe Mr. Lucas confirmed that with the auditor as well.
Yes, I believe that's correct. At this point, the auditor would need a resolution from this council waiving the filing deadline in order for the taxpayer to be able to file for their deduction and receive that in the next tax bill.
Okay, thank you. Additional, Councilmember Smith, did you have additional comment or question?
No, I was just trying to get a sense of what kind of, you know, fiscal we're talking about, and I'm inclined to vote no as well, I just thought I would try to quantify that for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Volin?
I don't know that we got an answer to Councilmember Smith's question about what the cash value, the actual dollar value, would be. It's 30% of their abatement, but do we know how much the abatement was, how much that 30% amounted to? Do either Mr. Allen or Mr. Lucas have that?
I don't have that in front of me.
So it should be, the 30% would be applied to the total assessed value, which right now is at 17 million, so it would be 30% times the 17 million, is my understanding.
Taxes they would pay on 17 million?
So the 30% goes to the assessed value, which reduces the assessed value, and then the taxes are assessed at the net assessed value, so, yeah.
So basically, it would be the taxes on 5.4 million?
That's right.
Okay, so whatever they would pay in tax on 5.4 million, let's assume it's 3% or 2, is it 2% or 3%?
It could be up to 3 under the Constitution, I don't think we're that high in Monroe County, but.
So we're talking about, no, no, it's 15,000, more like 15,000 to 16,000. Okay, thank you, Mr. Allen.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Rallo?
Yes, Mr. Allen, could you remind me, was that a 10-year abatement extending from 2016, or are there, including this year, are there three years remaining in the duration? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions or any additional final comment? Councilmember Volin?
I would like to, I would not like, well, I would like to be a fly on the wall, but I wouldn't want to be the employee who messed up and cost their company $16,000. But that sounds like what the value of this abatement is to the company, and yeah, I don't have any compunction about voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Seeing none, our clerk is not here. Would anyone like to create a diversion for a moment?
I would like to make.
A comment? Go ahead.
Well, just, you know, this has been a good debate, and I'm also concerned about the precedent of this as well, that, you know, that we can't be lax, or we can't allow this sort of lax behavior and have staff time occupied with, you know, pleading for people who have a financial gain to, you know, to make up the forms that are required for their own abatement. That just seems completely backwards. So the precedent is part of this too, for the record. And that was enough to bring our.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, I'll make a comment since I haven't yet. I agree with my colleagues that I do not want to approve this resolution. So in addition to what Councilmember Rallo just said, that we, you know, we have rules, and our staff has spent an ordinate amount of time trying to get this company to follow those rules, also, the fact that nobody from the company is here, we had a public hearing on their tax abatement, and they were not concerned enough to send anybody, I mean, from any level of their organization, to attend our meeting. So I'm disappointed in that as well, so I feel like we do need to be strict about this particular rule, and hopefully, next year, they'll do better.
Additional comments? Okay, seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Resolution 2311?
Yes, Councilmember Sandberg?
No.
Smith?
No.
Volin?
No.
Rosenbarger?
No.
Piedmont Smith?
No.
Scanbulory?
No.
And Rallo?
No.
That fails 0-7. So, thank you. Is it the will of council to take up Resolution 2312 at this time? Councilmember Rallo?
Shall I introduce it? Let's see. Madam President, I move that Resolution 2312 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the motion to, no, no, sorry, sorry. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the motion to introduce?
Councilmember Smith?
No.
Volin?
No.
Rosenbarger?
No.
Piedmont Smith?
No.
Scanbulory?
No.
Rallo?
No.
And Sandberg?
No.
The motion to introduce fails 0-7. Continuing with legislation for second reading and resolutions, that takes us to Ordinance 2310.
Thank you, Madam President, I move that Ordinance 2310 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to introduce?
It's Councilmember Volin?
Yes.
Wait, don't we need to take this from the table rather than?
Oh, you're right.
Introduce it?
I'm sorry. So would you please withdraw your motion to introduce and?
Yes, I withdraw my motion to introduce.
And move that it be taken?
And I'll make the motion to take Ordinance 2310 from the table.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to take Ordinance 2310 from the table. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Volin?
Thank you.
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scanbulory?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
And Smith?
Yes.
That passes 7-0. Ordinance 2310 is taken from the table. We have had a presentation on this already, I believe Ms. Scanlon is already here. Did you have additional presentation you wanted to make, or?
I don't know if Mr. Volin, Jackie Scanlon, Development Services Manager, Planning and Transportation, one of the things that was to happen after the last presentation was that it was going to go to the Parking Commission, so it did do that. I made a presentation at one meeting, and then it went to a second, the first meeting on the 25th of May, and then the second meeting on the 8th of June. They considered a memo to support the ordinance accepting the three uses that we had in that we had increased the maximum, but we're not able to come to a quorum agreement on that memo. So that's all I know about its appearance at Parking Commission. And Mr. Volin may be able to answer more questions on that. Yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you. Are there questions for Ms. Scanlon? Okay, I believe we have, yeah, I believe we have two amendments this evening coming before us. So Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I move Amendment 1 to Ordinance 2310.
Second.
And let me open it up here. Okay, so this amendment addresses the maximum vehicle parking allowance for restaurants, which currently in our municipal code is 10 spaces per 1,000 square feet of gross floor area for indoor seating. The Ordinance 2310 would increase that to 15 spaces, but this amendment would remove that change. So it would keep it at 10 spaces per 1,000 square feet of gross floor area. And the reasoning is that there's currently no different parking maximum for a restaurant that's located near public parking versus a restaurant where there's no public parking nearby. And so if there's public parking nearby, it could well be quite sufficient to have 10 spaces per 1,000 square feet. And where there's no public parking, or where the owner of the restaurant feels that they need more parking than the 10 per 1,000 square feet, they could still request a variance, as a few restaurants have done. So I think it's better to err on the side of not having a lot of unnecessary paved surface, and so not changing that maximum.
Thank you. Are there questions on Amendment 1? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Rallo?
Just to hear your response to Amendment 1.
That, we are fine with that amendment. We, you know, explained last time why we were proposing the increase. You know, if we continue to see issues with potential uses that for some reason can't meet a variance requirement, and then it's hindering development, we'll bring it back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Seeing none, let's go to the public for comment on this. I'm seeing one person in chambers. Are there any additional in chambers? I'm not seeing any. And Mr. Lucas, can you extend our invitation on Zoom, please?
Yes, if any members of the public wish to speak to this amendment, please let us know by using the raise hand feature under your reactions button, or your more button in your control bar, or by sending a chat to the meeting host.
If you would, please sign in, and then share your name for the record. And then you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Madam President. This is Christopher MG from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. I spoke about this issue last time it came up. We are in full support of the current language and not the amendment as proposed. The UDO changes come from full support from the Plan Commission, an 8-0 vote. So it was unanimous in nature. This was deliberated over two months, and this constitutes the public weighing in. Just to reiterate, as a member of the Parking Commission, according to the memo that you received in your packet, the Parking Commission considered, but ultimately did not adopt a resolution recommending that the parking numbers should not be changed for restaurants and fitness uses. That resolution failed. So it's important to note that not one, but two bodies decided against this particular amendment. And as I sort of pointed out last time on why those parking maximums should be increased, and I think Ms. Scanlon brought that up last time, is the current maximums are other communities' minimums. We are a progressive community, and I think we continue to be with the changes of this UDO, which adds very sensible maximums where they are not, and increases those parking maximums, which many of these eateries are not within the central corridor where public parking is available. One of the things that it comes across as is a punitive nature of this amendment, that it's kind of punishing councils and Plan Commissions that pass for too much parking, which I think we agree that there was too much of those impervious surface lots. But that's not how we should legislate today. We should be practical. Going to the Board of Zoning Appeals is cumbersome. If you look at their agenda, those are four-hour meetings. I've had to testify at those particular meetings to get variances. They are not fast, they are not quick, they are very deliberate, and they do a great job. But this is not a means for doing this, for each and every parking that needs to be over the current maximum. And I wanted to point out that, you know, with all the restaurants not being pedestrian-friendly, there's not bike paths to make it easy to get there. And this is important for not just the patrons, but the people who work there. It has to be convenient for them to make a living, and that's what should be thought about. I mean, I hear day in on these meetings from Traffic Commissioner Greg Alexander about the starry state of our sidewalks, our bike paths. Well, I think they're probably still sorry if we are listening to him. Parking is needed for making the needs of these businesses for both their patrons and the people that work there. I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. MG. Mr. Lucas, do we have any takers on Zoom?
Not that I see, no.
Okay, and any additional comments in chambers? Seeing none, let's come back to council for questions. Councilmember Volin? Oh, I'm sorry. Questions? Seeing none, comments? Councilmember Volin?
Right, it's rare that I disagree with my esteemed colleague from the Plan Commission, the Parking Commission, Mr. MG. But I want to point out a couple of subtleties in the statement he made. While the Plan Commission did endorse this 8-0, the Parking Commission's considered, but ultimately did not adopt a resolution recommending that the parking numbers should not be changed for restaurant and fitness center uses. The resolution failed 4-1-3. So there were three abstentions. There's at least one, maybe two new members of the commission. But I just don't think it's as resounding a no as the yes was from the Plan Commission. I also don't think that the Plan Commission has as its primary objective considering the role of parking. And as we'll see in the resolution that I'm presenting tonight, the way we've thought about parking has changed dramatically in the past, you know, 10, 20 years. But having said that, I mean, I don't think this is a dramatic change. And to be fair, I'll just say that I voted for it. So if we take my vote away, it was still, and if we don't count Mr. MG's vote, he opposed it. It was 3-0-3 for the remainder of the Parking Commissioners. So I just think that's a more ambivalent assertion there. And it was also brought on relatively short notice. We didn't, we weren't consulted before. It was, it came to us on June 8th. So I would urge members to take that with a grain of salt. But having said that, I did vote for that resolution. I do support this amendment. I don't think it's a dramatic difference either way. I also want to point out that at least two of the three applicants for, to the BZA for that parking were chain restaurants, Chipotle, I think, Starbucks. So I don't feel particularly, you know, I mean, while I respect any franchise owner, you know, as they're doing business, I don't know that necessarily means that we should make it easier for more land to be covered by asphalt. So those are, so those are some of my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Rallo?
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
To Ms. Scanlon. So the Plan Commission advised the increase from 10 to 15 spaces per 1,000 square feet for restaurants. You, staff recommended that, is that correct? And now you've reversed and said you're in favor of going back to 10?
No, we're not reversing. We prefer the 15. We're just saying we're not opposing the 10. We think the 10 could still work, and if it doesn't work, we'll come back.
Yes. Could you elaborate a little bit more? Why would you, why did you propose the 15? You saw a need? Okay.
We proposed the 15 because we've seen multiple variances for restaurants, kind of as Mr. MG pointed out, that aren't located in areas where shared parking, or street parking, or public parking opportunities are available. So they have to support all of their own parking on site. So when we have particular uses that seem to have variances come up over and over related to a certain dimensional standard, or parking standard in this case, and we can see that we're tracking those, and that maybe those numbers are inadequate for some reason, then we will look to see if that needs to be changed. So in this instance, also as Mr. MG pointed out, when the maximums were first created, you know, a number of years ago, many of them were just changed from the minimums, so the number is fairly low. We have heard from other members of the public for other potential developments that the numbers are low for this particular use. So we felt comfortable increasing that number. Something we discussed when Ms. Piedmont Smith came to us and said, I may do an amendment here, was that we may need to look, we may need to parse restaurant size. The restaurants that really are hurt by the number are ones that don't require a large building, because that's where you're deriving your parking from. So restaurants that are going into large buildings, the number is adequate at 10. But most of the developments we see are small buildings. So we may actually need to parse the proposal for you, you know, when we come with our updates next year, and have a different number for large and small. The only variances we've seen thus far are for smaller buildings. And so that may be something kind of more fine-grained that we need to get into. So we decided at the department that we wouldn't, you know, recommend against the amendment, because there may be some more fine-grained work that could be done to address the concerns that we saw with the variances.
I see. So it's a very dynamic situation. But I'm a little nervous about disenfranchising smaller restaurants. So one last question. During the Plan Commission, were there public that came to support the 15, the increase? Were there restaurant owners, or were there?
Oh, Mr. MG, were you at the Plan Commission? We did not have much, we did not have much public. Yes, so at the first hearing, and so Mr. Smith can weigh in as well. At the first hearing, we had one very vocal for some other uses. And then at the second hearing, I don't believe we had any public comment related to the parking maximums.
Okay, very good, thanks. I think then that satisfies my question. Thanks.
Additional questions? Councilmember Volin, and then Councilmember Smith?
Can we get a sense of, the implication is that there are a significant number of variance requests? Can we get an actual number of how many requests there have been? I thought that it was something like three.
Yeah, I think it's three. I believe it was three.
So it's not like dozens?
Correct.
It's not, it's just a few, I mean, three, literally three. Is that really a significant number?
I think for the number of new restaurants that we've seen build and go in, it is. Because we haven't seen many build and go in under the new rules that, sorry, build and open, you know, actual restaurant development with these numbers, without requesting variance. You know, so three does sound like a small number, but it's not like we've seen 20 new restaurant buildings built in the last three years. We haven't seen much more than.
That's literally three over the past three years?
I think it was three or four years, yeah.
I mean, that's literally one restaurant a year that's coming and asking for more parking. I mean, we're in a, I keep coming back to our comprehensive plan. We have this goal of trying to mitigate climate. And so paving, I mean, maybe I don't know if the restaurant that's applying for the parking is creating new parking, or is simply repurposing existing asphalt. Do we have any sense of that?
It would be, in those particular cases, I think it's different in each. But it would, the change would allow for either. So the change would allow for new asphalt if the restaurant was currently, you know, a green space.
Right, so that's my other, that might, you know, besides the, just sort of unconsidered desire for parking, perception of need for parking, there's the, I mean, if this results in new asphalt being laid, doesn't that go against our plan?
Well, I won't give my "we" balance priorities speech like I did last time. But I mean, we have to have, we have to have some parking, right? We have to offer parking. We know that's a reality. So some asphalt is going to be laid. We obviously, of course, also have a lot of goals related to sustainability and protecting green space, one of which, for example, impervious surface coverage, that isn't changing. But we do also use these parking maximum numbers to keep down asphalt. So yes, that's something that you would have to weigh, whether or not you think that's appropriate to change.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smith, and Councilmember Rallo?
Thank you. I was on a Plan Commission, and, you know, it was just an idea of, I think, along with you, that was to help promote business in the community and make it easier for smaller businesses to serve their customers. I guess the question I would have is, we don't really have a solid, we don't have really evidence or data to suggest that 15 is better than 10, really, do we? I mean, so the idea was to assist businesses. So I think that's what you were thinking. I think that's what the Plan Commission was thinking when we had a discussion at that point. So I guess I didn't really have a great question. I just kind of wanted to think out loud with Ms. Scanlon, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo?
Well, I was coming from Councilmember Smith, because I was going to ask you how you deliberated and why. So restaurants without public parking available, this affects. Small restaurants find it restrictive, and yet the comprehensive plan directs us to minimize impervious surface. Of the three variance requests over four years, were they granted by the BZA?
Yes.
They were?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so exceptions were made in those cases.
Yeah, so you all are familiar, but just for anyone who's watching at home, you know, variances aren't just, oh, this is going to be hard for me to run my business. I need more parking. You have to demonstrate that the parcel you're on is restricted in such a way. It's peculiar in such a way that you need relief from that. So the three locations were able to do that.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Additional questions? Or comments? Councilmember Piedmont Smith? Comment? Okay. And then Councilmember Rallo?
Thank you. I would just comment that as was given in the rationale for this amendment, there is no distinguishing in the UDO between restaurants that are near public parking or, and/or in the downtown, and restaurants that are nowhere near public parking. So in the interest of the goals that we lay out in our comprehensive plan, I thought it best to err on the side of less parking, so that there's no unnecessary paving happening where it's close to a public parking facility, such as perhaps in Hopewell, where the parking garage is the only thing left standing right now. In my view, it's better to err on the side of less parking, and since the parking rules apply equally throughout the city. And then those areas where there's really no on-street parking, or no parking garage or anything, and that have the small footprint that Ms. Scanlon mentioned, could go through the variance process. Now, another way to do that would be to have separate, separate maxima. And just say, you know, the ones downtown have this maximum. The ones within, what, 100 feet of public parking have this maximum, and others have a different one. So if this amendment fails, then perhaps that would be another approach to take. But in. But in, at this, at this point, I, of course, support the amendment. And if it continues to be a problem, I'm sure the staff will bring that problem back to our attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo.
Yes, been a good discussion. I appreciate Mr. MG's comment. But I am inclined to support the amendment. I think Ms. Scanlon alluded to what Councilmember Piedmont Smith mentioned, that perhaps an increase in parking maximums need to be fine-tuned. And apparently demonstrated by the variance request being approved, those that needed an exception were granted. So I think we should, I'm going to err on the side of decreasing, well, adhering to the comprehensive plan to minimize impervious surface. So I'll support the amendment. Thanks.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Volin?
So yeah, I think that everything about this ordinance is an exercise in questioning our assumptions. Do we really have to have parking? I mean, that's a, that's not an absolute. I think that's a mistake we've made for 20, 30, 50 years that somehow parking was an end in itself and the only way to move people around is to make sure there's plenty of parking. I think it's the point of a lot of work we've been doing objectively as a city to question assumptions like that in our comprehensive plan, in the UDO. Because we also know that parking begets parking and that we should be looking not only to find other ways to move people around, but to maybe find ways to make our city more compact so that there's less demand for parking. It's just not an end in itself. And it's important to assist the businesses, but it can't be the sole consideration for the Plan Commission. You know, we trust that the Plan Commission deliberates in the context of the plan, of the comprehensive plan. And so the plan doesn't, doesn't just say, well, we have to help businesses by providing more parking. I don't mean to be crass about it. I mean, there's a lot of considerations in the plan. This is just one of them. But Councilmember Smith noted that the Plan Commission just didn't think particularly deeply about this one point in a raft of 100 or more changes to the UDO, even though it's sort of a straightforward change that's basically introducing a bunch of new maximums where there were no limit before. And that's why the ordinance itself is a very good change. I can under, I'm not surprised that this sort of escaped notice. I don't expect everyone to catch everything, but I'm glad we had this conversation now. Also, I'm very encouraged by the, I mean, before we adopted the new UDO, the most recent UDO, we never revisited it. It was like set in stone. And now staff is revisiting the UDO on a regular basis. Mr. Robinson is teeing up revisions to the UDO in the same way that Susie Johnson, the former Public Works Director, teed up revisions to Title 15, Vehicles and Traffic. They were regular and frequent, maybe not as regular as, as Public Works back then did. But, you know, like, we should have been revising the UDO more in the first place, but it needed enough of an overhaul that's just as well that we waited until afterwards to start revising it in earnest. But we are doing that. And so if we can find a more granular solution that will aid certain restaurants without compromising our, our goals and maybe reduce the amount of time spent at BZA, I want to encourage that. And I've been happy to have any discussion with anybody who'd like to talk about that. I don't think that this discussion is over, but I do support the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Seeing none, I will invite the clerk to call the roll on Amendment 1.
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
No.
Smith?
No.
Volin?
Yes.
That passes 5-7. Thank you, everyone. And I believe we have.
Five, two.
Five, two. What did I say? Five, seven, which doesn't even add up. Sorry. Okay. Five, two. And I believe we have Amendment 2 now.
Yes, Madam Chair. I move Amendment 2 to Ordinance 2310.
Second.
Thank you.
This amendment decreases the maximum parking for stadium as a land use. So currently, in the ordinance, it is one space per four seats in the stadium. And this amendment would decrease that to one space per eight seats. And this is based on, largely on the chart that was presented in May, where we saw examples of other stadiums in other Indiana cities that had a lot fewer than one parking space per eight seats. And so I, I don't see that we would need more parking than this. Furthermore, per our comprehensive plan, we really should be encouraging structured parking for any large gathering places, such as a stadium. And finally, I would like to mention that IU is exempt from this. So it seems very unlikely we would have any stadium built that's not an IU-related stadium. But just in case, I think it's, it's more wise to limit the parking in a more, limit the parking more, is what I'm trying to say, than what is in the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Scanlon and staff want to respond?
We do refine this amendment as well. As we talked about last time, there were a couple of typos in the table that Councilperson Piedmont Smith was referencing. So, you know, the number of spaces, for example, at the Kokomo Municipal Stadium, under the proposal, it's a 4,000-seat stadium. So that would, the proposal would allow 1,000 parking spaces. And as we said last time, that means ground-level parking spaces, not structured. So that is, that's a lot of parking. So moving to eight would obviously cut that in half at 500, which is still quite a bit. That was one use that we had gotten some public feedback on at the first hearing. So yeah, we, we think that that's reasonable and agree that as much as we can and in some incremental ways, pushing larger developments toward structured parking is, is good to further some of the comprehensive plan goals related to land use.
Thank you. Are there questions on Amendment 2? Councilmember Volin?
I don't have the figures in front of me, but I recall that the four stadia that were mentioned in Indiana, Indiana of all places, had parking figures that were in order of magnitude lower than 1 and 4, or even 1 and 8. Why so modest a change? Why not 1 and 40?
I don't have a good response to that. I felt like cutting it in half was a good starting point. If anybody wanted to cut it further, they could have done their own amendment, I suppose. Or reached out to me after they've seen the amendment that I authored.
We don't have any expectation that stadia are about to get built anywhere in Bloomington, are we? I mean, it's not like it's imminent, right?
And not as far as I know. That may be a better question for staff.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Seeing none, let's go to the pub. Oh, Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Well, I. Thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to just point out. So the Municipal Stadium in Kokomo that Ms. Scanlon pointed out, there was a typo. It would allow, 1,000 spaces would be allowed because there's 4,000 seats. I just wanted to point out, it actually only has 63 surface parking spaces. So it has, as Councilmember Volin said, exponentially smaller amount than what is allowed. So it would, under the new proposal, a stadium with 4,000 seats would be allowed, 500 spaces. That's still way more than this particular example has. So just wanted to mention.
Thank you. Questions on, additional questions on Amendment 2? Seeing none, let's go to the public for comment on Amendment 2 to Ordinance 2310. If you have comments on this amendment, please approach the podium. Mr. Lucas, can you extend our invitation on Zoom?
Yes, if anyone wants to speak to this amendment, please use the raise hand feature to let us know. You can find that in your control bar under the reactions button or the more button. You can also send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak.
I'm not seeing any comments here in chambers. Mr. Lucas, seeing anyone on Zoom?
No.
Okay, let's give it just another few seconds. Okay. And seeing none, let's come back to council for additional questions on Amendment 2 or comments, question or comment? Okay. Seeing no questions, let's go to comment. Councilmember Volin?
Yeah, I'm tempted to make a motion to change the number 8 to the number 80. I don't, I mean, first of all, we're not expecting stated to be built, but I keep going back to former Councilmember Ruff's idea years ago that Bloomington is a good city for minor league baseball. And that if Richmond has a stadium of 1,000 people and Evansville has a stadium of 4,000, we should be able to build a stadium of 2,000 for minor league baseball. And for some reason, every time I think of his idea, I think that the ideal place to put it would be right in that giant parking lot in front of the convention center. Like, that's, that would be like a Wrigley, Wrigley Field-like stadium. And I just don't see the need for a particularly huge amount of parking there because it would be right in the middle of town, accessible to every bit of transit. It would be literally next door to the Bloomington Transit Center and people could take the bus in, much like they do in Chicago, where the L is the primary way that people get to Wrigley Field. It's totally possible for a stadia to fit into an urban context. And so when we have huge parking maxima like that, it just says to somebody who might cite a stadium somewhere in our area, well, where can I find a green field to put it in? And of course, we're going to want to put a bunch of parking around it because we're going to want to have tailgating, too. Well, let me, let the District 6 representative tell you the consequences of tailgating. There are certainly plenty of people who live near the tailgate field by IU who've got stories about, I don't mean to overstate it, but the debauchery that happens in parking lots and the area. So if anything, reducing parking might discourage exactly the kind of behavior that I think we may be afraid of. The only reason I wouldn't suggest changing the number now is because of what I just said. We are in an iterative process. The staff is revising more. So I don't feel in particular rush to fix this because, again, stadia are built very infrequently. But this isn't really enough. It's a glaring exception. And this amendment really doesn't do enough to curtail it. It should be an order of magnitude greater. So that's my thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments on Amendment 2? Seeing no further comments? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Amendment 2?
Yes, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
No.
Smith?
No.
Volin?
Yes.
And Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes 5-2, which brings us to Ordinance 2310 as amended. There are no further amendments, right? Okay. Which brings us back to Ordinance 2310 as amended. Are there additional council questions? Okay. Then let us go to the public for any comment on Ordinance 2310 as amended. If you have comments on the ordinance as amended, please approach the podium. Mr. Lucas, can you extend our invitation on Zoom, please?
Yes. If anyone would like to speak on this ordinance, please let us know by using the raise hand feature or by sending a chat to the meeting host.
I'm not seeing any comments here in chambers. Are we seeing any on Zoom?
None on Zoom, no.
Okay. In which case, let's come back to council for any question, any remaining questions or any final comment? Comment or question? Okay. I'm not seeing any questions. Please go ahead.
Overall, this is a great change. It's adding limits where there weren't limits before. And so I want to commend the staff's work on this. I want to commend the, the normalization of parking maximums. It's, it's overdue. And the more we can control and regulate parking, the more efficient we can be with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comment? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Ordinance 2310 as amended?
Councilmember Scambalory?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
No.
Smith?
No.
Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? I didn't catch it. I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry. Again.
Thank you. And Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
And that passes 5-2. Thank you, everyone.
Madam President, I move that Ordinance 2312 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
It's been moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to introduce?
Madam Chair, Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
And Scambalory?
Yes.
That passes 7-0. Will the clerk please read?
"Ordinance 2312, an ordinance to amend Ordinance 2226, previously amended by Ordinance 2240, which fix the salaries of appointed officers, non-union and ASME employees for all the departments of the City of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana for the year 2023, regarding to reflect updates needing implementation in 2023." The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends Ordinance 2240, which set the maximum 2023 salary for all appointed officers, non-union and ASME employees for all the departments of the City of Bloomington, Indiana. The amendment reflects changes to job titles, a change to a job grade, and additional FTEs.
Madam President, I move that Ordinance 2312 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have additional presentation from staff? Let's start there.
Good evening, councilmembers. Emily Fields, Acting HR Director. Last week, I was here requesting your approval of Ordinance 2312, which again amends Ordinance 2226, which sets 2023 pay grades and salary ranges for certain city staff. As a reminder, this amendment requests an additional project manager in the Engineering Department, changes to two job titles in the Legal Department, a title and pay grade change to a position in the Environmental Division of the Utilities Department, and allows for additional certification pay for the master motor equipment operator at the Utilities Dillman Plant. It also reflects changed language in the second-to-last paragraph of Section 2I. This, this also includes new FTEs for the Fire Department that we would like to take out in an upcoming amendment. I will take any questions that you have at this time.
Thank you. Does council wish to ask questions now? Or I know we have an amendment waiting in the wings. Okay, I'm not seeing any questions. Did you want to move the amendment?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move Amendment 1 to Ordinance 2313.
Second.
We're in 2312 or 2313?
Oh, I'm sorry. 2312. Amendment 1 to Ordinance 2312.
Second.
So this ordinance removes the addition of three community EMT slash community paramedic positions. So it changes the text from seven of those positions back down to four of those positions. And this is at the request of the administration and after discussion with Chief Moore and feedback from the firefighters. It was determined that the city should not take on the annual. It was determined that the city should not take on the annual fiscal impact of adding these three EMTs at this time.
Thank you. Chief Moore, did you wish to share comments?
Could you ask Chief Moore, Fire Chief? We did ask for this amendment to be added to this, to give us additional time to discuss the firefighters' concerns. I am full support of adding these positions with the future issues that our, our fire department is facing, but at this time, I would like additional time to work with our firefighters and administrative staff to make sure that this is a good fit and that we are hearing their concerns, and then we can move forward with this with a well-baked and well-oiled plan for the council in a future time. We do intend to bring this forward at a future date, but this is to give us time and to allow us to, to work with our staff to make sure that this is handled so that there is no longer a public fight over something that is for the ultimate good of our community. So I would appreciate your support on this amendment.
Thank you, Chief Moore. Are there questions from council for Ms. Fields or Chief Moore or the sponsor on amendment one? Seeing none, let's go to the public for comment. This is on amendment one to ordinance twenty-three-twelve. If you have comments here in chambers, please approach the podium. Mr. Lucas, can you extend our invitation on Zoom, please?
Yes, if you would like to speak to this amendment, please let us know by using the raise hand feature or by sending the meeting host a chat to state that you would like to speak.
Okay, I'm not seeing any commenter, oh, I am seeing commenters. Welcome. If you would please share your name for the record?
Hi.
And then you'll have three minutes.
Sean Hutton-Locker, Secretary-Treasurer for the Union. I just wanted to take a, this minute to address you guys and let you know what our concerns were initially with the positions and what our stance is at this current moment in time. You know, our objection is not in the advantages of this program in the future. We certainly agree that it does carry a lot of weight to benefit our community and our department. Our objection is the timing and the prioritization of the funds at this time when we're in a staffing crisis and the fact that as we looked into it a little bit more, it did not seem as though there was going to be any real impact to this current staffing crisis by bringing on these additional employees. And it will, in fact, sabotage our budget to some degree by adding additional salaries at a time when we're facing serious retention issues and losing firefighters by the handful to higher-paying departments. So that, that is our objection. Nothing against the MIH program or the department. We certainly support it and, and look forward to the eventual growth of it. We would just like to see a commitment from our city administration on addressing the issues that we have with our sworn firefighters and before they move on to building new programs and advancing those. Firefighters are the foundation of a fire department. At this moment in time, our foundation is crumbling. So it doesn't seem to make much sense to me to build on top of that building while the foundation is crumbling. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Lucas, do we have anyone on Zoom?
No.
Okay, or any additional commenters here in chambers? Seeing none, let's come back to council for any additional questions on amendment one? Or any final comments on amendment one? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on amendment, on, amendment one to ordinance twenty-three-twelve?
Yes, Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
And Rallo?
Yes.
That amendment passes seven-zero. Thank you, everyone. That brings us back to ordinance, and there is only one amendment there, correct? Yes. Which brings us back to ordinance twenty-three-twelve as amended. Are there council questions? Before we go to the public for comment? Okay, seeing none, let's go to the public for any comment on ordinance twenty-three-twelve as amended. If there are any commenters here and, anyone wishing to offer comment here in chambers, please approach the podium. Mr. Lucas, can you please extend our invitation on Zoom?
Yes, members of the public that want to speak to this, speak to this ordinance. Please let us know by using the raise hand feature or by sending a chat to the meeting host.
Okay, I'm not seeing any commenter, any comment requests here in chambers. Are you seeing any on Zoom? Okay, in which case, let's come back for any additional council questions? Or council comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on ordinance twenty-three-twelve as amended?
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
And Sandberg?
Yes.
That passes seven-zero. Thank you, everyone.
Madam President, I move that ordinance twenty-three-thirteen be introduced by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to introduce?
Yes, Councilmember Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
And Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes seven-zero. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance twenty-three-thirteen, an ordinance to amend ordinance twenty-two-twenty-five, which fixes salaries of officers of the police and fire departments for the city of Bloomington, Indiana for the year 2023, regarding to reflect increases in compensation to certain firefighters. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends and replaces ordinance twenty-two-twenty-five, which set the minimum and maximum salary rates for all sworn fire and police personnel for the year 2023, in accordance with council-approved collective bargaining agreements, by adding an assistant chief of operations position and amending one other job title within the fire department and by adding sections IF retention pay, IG Kelly day vacation buyback, and IH premium payments for battalion chiefs to the ordinance.
Thank you. Did the staff wish to comment, please?
I move that ordinance twenty-three-thirteen be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Fields?
Hello, again. Good evening. This ordinance is before you for review and approval. It amends the public safety salary ordinance for this current year. As a reminder, it provides for an hourly premium payment for hours worked earlier this year during the COVID pandemic. That's in section IF. IG allows the city to buy back firefighter Kelly days if the firefighters wish to work their previously scheduled Kelly day. And section IH compensates battalion chiefs with $100 in addition to their regular pay when they get, work a, an additional shift outside of their schedule. A forthcoming amendment will take away the, or eliminate the addition of the assistant chief of operations, and another amendment will add a signing bonus for new hires. And I take your questions at this time.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Fields. Chief Moore, did you want to add anything?
Good evening. I would like to point out that these solutions that are being proposed were things that were brought up at a labor management meeting. This is a collaborative approach between labor management to identify how we can get past our current staffing crisis. You know, not all points are exactly agreed upon, but this is something that, that we have done as a department to continue service without losing compensation for things that our firefighters should have been compensated for, like the Kelly days. And I do know that there are amendments which I could speak upon after they're introduced, if that would help, but we would like to see that these things happen so that we can get past our crisis, we can compensate our employees fairly, and that those that are willing to work a little extra to get us through this, that they can have the compensation that they are owed. So, thank you.
Thank you. Does council wish to ask questions now, or shall we proceed with amendments first? Okay. Proceed. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Madam President, I move amendment one to ordinance twenty-three-thirteen.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Please, go ahead.
This amendment was requested by the administration, and it adds a section that I think was just left out by mistake initially, section II, recruitment incentives, which says newly-hired firefighters will receive $5,000 within the first year of employment. Those who have previously been employed by the city must have a year gap in full-time employment with the city to be eligible for this incentive.
Thank you. Are there questions from council? Or, I'm sorry, does staff want to respond? My fault.
Good evening. Yes, we did ask for this. This is something that when we advertised the position, we discussed whether it was an increase in salary or whether it was a hiring bonus. The equivalent of this is within the budget, so we budget all of our positions at the firefighter first-class salary. We hired probationary firefighters at $5,000 less than that salary. The signing bonus brings them up to what most times you have to wait one year to get. So this is a recruitment incentive. It was decided that the signing bonus would be a better impact than just increasing their pay and then they, they received that extra $5,000 over an entire year. So this is essentially a zero budgetary impact. We already budgeted for these positions to be at that pay, and this is a very valuable tool that may be directly responsible for the 21 people that are coming on board. We've just had the 11 last week. We have seven more starting on Monday, and then we have the remainder balance of the 21 that will start on July 24th. And it is important that we follow up on our promise. And for the oversight, this is something that was discussed that should have been brought forward. I was out, and as soon as I got back and realized I did not see it in the ordinance, I did ask for this amendment to be added. So I would appreciate council support so that we can make good on our promises to all the new firefighters that are starting. And again, a zero budgetary impact because it was already budgeted for, at those salaries. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fields, anything to add? Okay, let's come to council for questions, then. Seeing none, let's go to the public for comment on amendment one to ordinance twenty-three-thirteen. Are there any commenters here in chambers? I'm seeing none. And Mr. Lucas, can you extend our invitation on Zoom, please?
Yes, if there are any members of the public that want to speak to this item, please use the raise hand feature to let us know, or you can send a chat to the meeting host. We will recognize you that way.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any comment requests here in chambers. Mr. Lucas, do we have any on Zoom?
No, not at this time.
Seeing no public comment, let's come back to council. Are there questions? On amendment one? Or comments? Okay, seeing none, Madam Clerk, I invite you to call the roll on amendment one to ordinance twenty-three-thirteen.
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Volin?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes seven-zero, which brings us back to ordinance twenty-three-thirteen. I believe we have amendment two.
Yes, Madam President, I move amendment two to ordinance twenty-three-thirteen.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please go ahead.
This amendment removes a proposed assistant chief of operation position in the fire department from the ordinance. After discussion with Chief Moore and feedback from firefighters, it was determined that the city should not take on the 118,000 annual fiscal impact of the additional position at this time.
Thank you. Chief Moore, did you want to comment?
Thank you again on this. This is an amendment that I have asked for. I will, just like with the community EMT program, this is a vital position that is needed, knowing that it has to be drawn from internal staff when we are in our staffing crisis. I have concerns as to how we can fill it. It was proposed that could, could help us. We will get past this, and when we are no longer in crisis, this is something we'd like to revisit because it is definitely a needed position. And everything I said at the council meeting the other night of why I strongly believe in the extra safety, the capacity of administration to handle a younger workforce that is not as experienced will be reasons why I bring it back. But for tonight, I would like to request that you do approve this amendment, which will allow us to get past this and get the other really important portions of this ordinance through so that we can move forward with our business. And again, I'll work collaborative with our staff to bring back a better implementation plan of these things in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Moore. So, Ms. Fields, anything? So, let's come to council for any questions on amendment two to ordinance twenty-three-thirteen. Are there any questions? Seeing none, let's go to the public for comment. If there is public comment here in chambers, please approach the podium. Mr. Lucas, can you extend our invitation on Zoom, please?
Yes, if members of the public would like to speak to this ordinance, please let us know by using the raise hand feature or the chat feature. And I see no takers.
Thank you, and I'm not seeing any here in chambers. So let's come back to council for any additional questions? Or final comments on amendment two? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, I invite you to call the roll on amendment two to ordinance twenty-three-thirteen.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
And Rosenbarger?
Yes.
That passes seven-zero. Thank you, everyone. So, that brings us back to ordinance twenty-three-thirteen as amended. Are there any additional staff comments? Or council questions? Okay. And then let's go to public comment. Is there any public comment on ordinance twenty-three-thirteen as amended? Mr. Lucas, can you extend our invitation on Zoom, please?
Yes, if any members of the public would like to offer comment, please let us know by using the raise hand feature or the chat feature.
And I'm not seeing any commenters here in chambers, and we're not seeing any on Zoom, in which case, let's come back to council for any additional, any remaining questions on ordinance twenty-three-thirteen as amended. Councilmember Volin? Okay, let's go to comments, then. Miss, go ahead, Councilmember Volin.
Just briefly, it was a, a privilege to be able to talk with both the chief and representatives of the union over this problem because I didn't quite understand it, and I think that a lot of people had some misunderstandings because of the unfortunate way that the process unfolded. It was a little too compacted, and I don't think we're, I'm sure we're not done talking about it, but for now, I think that we found a good compromise, and I'm glad that the chief and the, the union have been sitting down and hashing out their differences. And I look forward to seeing what comes up over the next couple of months and also appreciate Ms. Fields' efforts here. I, she got dropped into a big old tub of water with this one, so, thanks very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandberg?
I do appreciate the tone that these amendments have brought forward with this particular topic. It is a critically important one, and I like the fact that we are finally recognizing that there is a crisis with our workforce shortage. I, I would disagree with a comment that one of my colleagues made last week, that getting involved with our workforce or getting involved with union matters is not the concern of the council. I certainly think it is. These are the individuals who keep us safe and keep the public safe, and when we find ourselves losing officers, whether it's police officers, whether it's firefighters, whether it's our ASME union workers, it's time to take a look at what's going on. And I think this council has been a good sounding board for many people who have come forward to speak the truth to us. And if this has resulted in an opportunity to take a pause, take the temperature, calm things down a bit, and figure out how are we going to deal with our staffing shortages that are causing unwarranted overtime, exhausted workers, no good will come from that. And so until we get that foundation repaired, as was, was mentioned, I think this is not the time to add new programming. I think this is the time to focus on why we're losing staff. I know it's happening everywhere, but this is the city of Bloomington, and we can do better here. And I do hope that the union leadership and the administration can have more productive talks. This may just be the very beginning of coming to the understanding of what the problems are and actually what is required from a fiscal standpoint to actually repair some of the damage that's been done in all of our public safety departments. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Seeing none? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I'd just like to thank the administration chief Moore and the firefighters as well. I know it's been a difficult period with the shortage of staff, and I'm just thrilled to hear that the staff, a significant number of new firefighters have been hired and are going to be coming on board soon. So hopefully, by the end of the year, you'll be fully staffed, and then we can move forward with making sure we stay fully staffed in the retention issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional final comment? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll on Ordinance 2313 as amended?
Yes. Counselmember Scambalory?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Rosenberg?
Yes.
And Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes 7-0.
Madam President, I move that Resolution 2310 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Well, it's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the motion to introduce?
Counselmember Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
I'll note that Counselmember Smith is out of the room. Counselmember Volin?
Yes.
Rosenberg?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
And Scambalory?
Yes.
And that passes 6-0. Will the clerk please read?
Resolution 2310, a resolution requesting an appropriation recommendation to establish additional bus routes circulating the greater downtown of Bloomington. The synopsis is as follows. This resolution is sponsored by Counselmember Volin and is a vehicle to express the council's interest in a recommendation from the mayor regarding appropriations to assist with the creation of a greater downtown circulator bus route.
Thank you.
Madam President, I move that ordinance, I'm sorry, Resolution 2310 be adopted.
It's been moved and seconded. Thank you. Counselmember Volin?
Thank you, Chair. And everyone for, let me make this presentation tonight. For more than 15 years, I have been contemplating or discussing the idea of a circulator downtown. The Bloomington Transit Board yesterday heard me lament the former existence of the number eight East Side Local, which was one of the only buses that did a circulator, and it was for College Mall, and it was by far the least-used route when it was there. But it did serve a clientele, and nevertheless, I always thought if 100 riders a day is enough for a bus service on the east side, what would be enough for a bus service downtown, let alone anything more elaborate like a streetcar line? At any rate, when we had discussions about the use of creed money, and it was clear to me that creed money would, excuse me, would not be put to use ultimately that was called for when the creed was created more than 20 years ago, I decided to put this forward. So with your permission, I'm going to go ahead and begin by saying why we're having this discussion. This is Resolution 0326. It was passed 9-0 in 2003, and it created the Bloomington, the second Bloomington Creed District. You'll note that we had created one beforehand, and during the 2003 session of the General Assembly, cities like Bloomington were allowed to make a second creed district. So you can see that it was a relatively rare thing. It's why there aren't more creed districts. There was one for Thompson to help rehabilitate it, and the downtown needed help back then, too. The creed district contemplated the idea that parking infrastructure was a specific end goal for creed money. This is at a time when it was considered a utility like water, sewer, electric, and we don't think of it quite the same way today. But nevertheless, it was a specific idea in the Bloomington, second Bloomington creed was that parking infrastructure counts as something that could be, creed money could be used. We could have used creed money, for example, to rebuild the Fourth Street Garage, but we chose not to. But I'm arguing tonight that a shuttle connecting every parking facility in town is a form of parking infrastructure, particularly because it maximizes the accessibility of all of our existing parking, and it should delay the demand for very expensive structured parking. We know that structured parking is an eight-figure concern these days. And that's what this slide talks about. The cost of providing structured parking is very high in the downtown. We know that the Trades District Garage was in eight figures. The Fourth Street Garage was in eight, I think we set aside something like $30 million for the two garages are close. And that's a lot of money for something that, debate anything else you will, but it's by definition fixed in place. And so we better make a good guess as to where we're going to put structured parking, or maybe it goes to waste. This is the map that was part of Resolution 0326, and you'll see that the map of the creed is almost identical to what we now consider greater downtown and what is, what has been since 2013, the meter zone. I've been arguing consistently that the money raised for the creed should be spent, the creed stands for Community Revitalization Enhancement District. It's a district. The money was raised within the district. It should be spent in the district. The downtown meter zone garage with all the garages and lots, it is the creed, and parking has been serving the creed all this time. This is perfectly consistent with the concept of the creed. So there's an untapped, related source of funds available to us to contemplate such a thing. Again, creed money should be spent in the place where it was collected. That was the original intent of the legislation. Parking infrastructure directly relates to the creed but is eight figures expensive. Almost all the parking is within the creed's borders. A shuttle is parking infrastructure, and most importantly, there is enough creed money left to launch such a service. So that's one reason. Another reason is because, that a downtown shuttle's time has come is because many city parking resources are underutilized. Much existing street and garage parking is in low demand, which I can't demonstrate easily tonight, but we can talk about it, as much as there is parking in high demand. Having a shuttle would make both garages, lots, and street parking more accessible. And if we have street parking, that is going begging, and we do, that's just as important infrastructure as structured parking. We can connect pretty easily every parking garage built by the city with a shuttle. With a shuttle and proper repricing of parking, our supply can be expanded without building any new parking, at least for a long time to come. We certainly, we maybe don't even have to pave new parking. And again, a shuttle would maximize the utility of all the parking we already have. So these are two reasons. Here's a third reason. Greater downtown has become too big to immediately walk across. It's grown. This is, again, the same creed map. The star in the center is the Courthouse Square. The outermost reaches of downtown are now a mile apart. They're .9 or one full mile apart. The average pedestrian walks about half that distance before they look for alternate transportation. Most people walk a quarter to a half mile. So it's clear that even though this map was in the 2003 resolution, our conception of what is downtown has expanded substantially. It goes from the sample gates on the right side to the Trades District on the north side to the Kroger Seminary Square on the south side. I think it's time that we addressed this issue, that people want to come downtown, but that idea has become bigger than perhaps many of us have been accustomed to over the years. So there's money available. Our resources are underutilized. Again, the outer points of downtown are a 20-minute walk. The average pedestrian doesn't walk more than 10 minutes before they find another way to go. And the increased size of downtown is one reason, not the only reason, why scooters appeared in 2018. While not all of us ride scooters, I think it's, the utility of it is obvious to a certain segment of people who might otherwise drive or not come downtown. And that's a debate for another time, how they've been implemented, but that's why they're here. In addition, other reasons for a scooter, for a shuttle are that not everyone can ride a scooter. Not everyone can bike. Not everyone can walk. The elderly, the infirm, small children. People, for some people, there's a concern about walking alone late at night. These are all reasons why a shuttle might have utility. Another reason is that it, simply put, would be good for visitors to the city, particularly people going to conventions of the Convention Center, which is a place that is also relatively underserved by other destinations, to the point where the least-used parking in Bloomington is and has consistently been the two blocks in front of the Marriott Courtyard and the Convention Center, because there's other options everywhere else. But it would be good for everyone else. It would be good for commuters, especially if Bloomington Transit's desire to see park and rides, if we give permission to let the Bloomington Transit operate outside the city. So that would help commuters access the less highly-priced parking on the edges of town. It would help alumni of IU and students who are attending games at the stadium, who want to go downtown after a game. It would help showgoers with a shuttle that might take you. We already see shuttles going to the IU auditorium for certain events. It would help people going to the game as well as coming from the game. It could even help churchgoers on Sundays. So what would service look like? So this is a map that was provided, should be in your packet in the memo, by Bloomington Transit. And in fact, the next several slides are all taken from that document which was prepared by BT for this discussion, but is not the only concept they have for providing service. I've talked for years about a single route that would be a T-shaped route between the three stars that I put on the previous map. This map is actually their idea for two routes, a north-south route that would run on College and Walnut between the Trades District and Seminary Square, and an east-west route that would run on 5th and 7th, Kirkwood and 7th between Rogers and Indiana. This map also includes a route that goes all the way up to 10th Street to 10th and Woodlawn and back. But it's, again, this is just one conception, and part of our goal tonight is to talk about, well, what do we want? But in either case, whether it's a single route or two routes such as shown here, the shuttle would require, according to BT, two electric buses plus a third spare. And again, it could be one route or two, but in the case of two routes, one bus would run each route, and there'd be a spare. In the case of a single route, both buses would run the same route. It would effectively be the same frequency. So this is also from the plan. This is, again, something that we've been talking about since 2007, and we talked about it again in 2018. The key figure here is that with the proposal that I'm asking us to consider, we're looking at a frequency of 20 minutes. It would be 20 minutes between buses on either route. The cost of a 30-foot ADA accessible battery electric bus would be around $1.1 million. Take at least a year for them to acquire, so there's no imminent chance of this happening soon. But there's $3.3 million for the buses alone. Here is an example of a 30-foot battery electric bus. You can notice that it's relatively easy to get on and off a bus like this. It's shorter and friendlier than a large regular bus. If, for some reason, shuttle service turns out to not be a good idea, the buses are easily usable by BT on other routes. And also, I think important is the fact that buses can be wrapped, and for me, there is no more important message to wrap these buses with than how they're paid for, except perhaps the fact that they would be free to use, and that that's a key part of the benefit of a circulator. Anyway, here's an example of what a bus would look like. So again, referring to the BT spec sheet, we've got the cost of the buses. There would also be a cost to add up to 16 new bus stops, but that is entirely a function of what route is chosen and how extensive the shuttle might be. These can range in cost from $25,000 to $75,000, and it depends on how much we build out, but we are counting roughly $1 million cost for the maximum amount of benches, shelters, and signage to advertise the existence of the circulator. And then finally, there's the cost of operating. The range here of operating a shuttle is very much dependent on the hours of operation, but we're looking anywhere from $400,000 to almost exactly $1 million a year in operating costs. So here is another part of the spec sheet, talking about how they derive that figure, but the bottom line is that number right there. It currently costs BT $100 an hour for all the different operating costs of a bus. And roughly speaking, a bus can operate at 10 miles an hour, so you can use that to calculate how much distance a bus can go in an hour. But anyway, all this math is based on this figure. So to begin with, if we just want to do nine to five, Monday to Friday, 16 revenue hours means two buses times eight hours each. That's how revenue here means cost of operating the bus. We're looking at $416,000 a year. If we were to expand the hours a couple to eight to six, we'd increase to about half a million. If we were to go eight to eight, it would be $625,000. I would, well, we're going to come back, come to that in a second. If we also include Saturdays, the additional costs would, depending if we go to eight to eight, would add up to another $125,000 a year. So now we're at about $750,000 a year for 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. six days a week. But I would like to call your attention to the idea of night owl service. One thing I'll point out is that demand for parking in downtown Bloomington is as high or higher in the evening than it is during the day. It's at the very least as high, so it's worth considering night owl service. If we were to extend service to 1:00 a.m., that would add another, six days a week, $156,000 a year. If we were to go to 3:00 a.m., that would add another $100, not quite $100,000 a year, but adding the three bottom lines gets you to just short of $1 million a year if you wanted to operate 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 a.m. six days a week. How would we fund it initially? There was $10 million in the downtown creed at the beginning of the year. That money went all but unused for its original purpose. We did devote $3 million to the new tech building and trades. The total capital cost of the shuttle and the shelters would be approximately $4 million, give or take. The total maximum operating cost of 20-minute frequency, six days a week, is a million annually. But we can do this service with local dollars alone, and we'd have funds to spare. There would be- There would be at least $2 million left in the in the money that was formerly part of the creed. What are ongoing funding options after year two? What I'm proposing is $1 million a year for the first year only, and then we'd have to find funding elsewhere. IU expressed interest 15 years ago about extending any shuttle or streetcar to the stadium, because they were planning on expanding Woodlawn Avenue, which they have done. So I think there's an opportunity for collaboration with IU there for at least a portion of the route, but that might be for a route that we wouldn't necessarily build ourselves. The food and beverage tax is a prime candidate for future funding. The shuttle is an obvious benefit to anyone who would use the convention center, and it might even obviate the demand to attach structured parking. So if we could save money on the amount of structured parking we build, if we even have to build it, because we have a shuttle running frequently enough, then the shuttle is paid for itself just in that respect alone. There's definitely the possibility of state and federal dollars. That would take some time to get, but the key thing is, if we establish the service, that's far and away the best way to get state and federal dollars to be interested in this local service, because we're already doing it. We've shown that we're willing to 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 put up the money. Most importantly, we know that for capital costs, the federal transit administration matches local dollars three or four to one, so there's great potential there. But for me, the most significant potential source of revenue is parking meters. Here are figures for the past six years for the amount of revenue brought in from parking in millions, the number of transactions in millions, and the average amount per transaction. A few things I want to call your attention to. In the first year of meters, revenue was about 2.2 million, so that's been a pretty consistent figure over time. And that's considering that the rate has never changed in 10 years. It's been a dollar an hour, but the rate of inflation now makes that dollar worth 78 cents an hour in 2013 dollars. Both meter and food and beverage tax data show that the post-pandemic, post-pandemic restaurants and business are returning to normal. You can see it in the figures here, that in 2022, we reached the same amount we were at in 2017. Demand was increasing for parking downtown before the pandemic. You can see it in the 2018 and 2019 numbers. But I think a really significant figure is the average length of stay, the average transaction. Notice that consistently, even despite the pandemic, the average amount of time that somebody is parking has increased. The 2022 figure is 46% greater than 2017. There are significantly fewer transactions, but they're spending as much money parking downtown. That, to me, is a sign that the consistent increase of the average transaction is a sign of that that our parking is not properly priced, and and at very least, it's underpriced because that figure is going up consistently. So here is a brief table I've worked up based on data over the past six years. There are approximately 1,500 meters downtown. 476 of them are being used more than 50% of the time of all available hours. Another 250 are being used between 37 and a half and 50%, another 277 between 25 and 37%, and below 25% more than 500 meters. So the average percentage of use is 38%, and these meters are sort of equal number above and below that figure. If we were, and this is the current rate, at the current rate, a dollar an hour, we're generating about 2.1, 2.2 million in revenue, based on the average over six years. If we were to increase meters by a quarter, we'd be matching the rate we were charging in 2013. If we were, if we to to increase the meter rate across the board 50 cents, we would generate almost $1 million a year. That would alone would be enough to fund a shuttle, which would in turn serve people who are parking. But an idea that I tend to prefer is if we were to to change the rate for meters being in demand above 50% of the time to $2, meters above 37% to $1.50, leaving, or then reducing meters below 37% to 50 cents, and the ones below 25% to 25 cents, you would generate almost as much revenue, 2.9 million, and you would be adjusting prices accordingly for the people who are using them. It would not be a a loss, it would be a win-win for all sorts of people. The people who demand, the most in-demand spaces are still willing to pay that money, but for people who have been reluctant to come downtown, prices like this ought to be attractive, and there's certainly enough spaces to justify it. So regardless of the way we use the revenue, an increase in 25 cents an hour on meters is past due. My idea is parking increment financing. It's like tax increment financing, but we pick a baseline, say 2.2 million, and all money raised above that would go to fund a project like the shuttle. Council can approve the use of money for such an expenditure with an express, with an extra vote. State statute says that this can be done at the end of a calendar year, and the amount in the parking meter fund can be transferred to the general fund, even though technically a shuttle doesn't meet the statute's definition of parking infrastructure. The council can do it anyway, and I, again, I would argue that is very much is infrastructure. So one big question here is, should we have more destinations, or should we have more frequent buses? Maybe 20-minute service isn't frequent enough. Maybe we should have two routes or one T-shaped route. Maybe we should extend the service to the Trades District garage and to the Hopewell garage. The latter is not in use at all and could be offered for free to people who are that price-sensitive. It's not being used, let's use it. So decisions to be made tonight. There's nothing binding here. A resolution's not binding. I've brought it so as to help develop an appropriation ordinance that council would support, which is going to be the first question the administration asks us. Do we do we support such an idea? So voting for this is like voting for extending bus service outside the city limits. It gives assurance to entities like BT, which is interested in including a downtown circulator as part of the corridor study that it's going to do for Third Street in order to consider an express bus. And I very much encourage amendments or postponement of this resolution in order to develop amendments. But the key thing is, should we pursue this? Should it be pursued as is or with fundamental changes? So to summarize, is a circulator a good idea? What should be the parameters of its service? Should it be, again, a larger map with less frequency or a smaller map with more frequency? But fewer destinations reached? What hours and days should it operate? Should we use legacy creed dollars to establish a shuttle? What sources of revenue to guarantee service funding after year one, if not parking increment financing alone? But again, the the gist of my proposal here comes from the fact that the creed wasn't going to get spent, the creed money wasn't going to get spent. And rather than spend it arbitrarily on anything, which we could do, and which the administration has already begun the process of doing by eliminating the Industrial Development Fund. So we could also create a shovel-ready project and use this money for it. That's my presentation. I appreciate the extended time to speak. Happy to take questions, but I'm going to return the slide back to the questions I've asked members to consider. And I'm happy to take questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. So questions for Councilmember Volin? Councilmember Rala?
Thanks for the thorough presentation, Councilmember Volin. I'm wondering about, in terms of funding, do you imagine that the fare would be free or or that it would be? You do. You noted yes.
I'd say free.
The idea of the free downtown.
To try to maximize the use, obviously. People hop on, they don't need to worry about fare.
Correct. The idea is that it's in lieu of, if we can, if we can maximize the use of our existing parking, it's done its job. It's in lieu of building more structured parking.
Could I ask one more follow-up? So I was thinking, again, you know, so this is a downtown circulator, but the stadium is more far afield. Makes sense to bring folks from the stadium down. They're clearly on Saturdays, on game days, they're looking for ways to come downtown. They may be driving, it's competing with parking, it's a mess. So this could really alleviate a lot of traffic congestion, et cetera, et cetera. So I think it's got great utility for that, but that could just be, in other words, the prototype for this could be downtown, but it could, on Saturdays, have extensions that might involve stadium, et cetera.
It could, but I don't see BT doing that without IU's cooperation. IU itself, again, when I was talking about it 15 years ago, that was where they were going with it. They have an abiding need to move people where they want to go after a game, but frankly, they have a need to move people where they want to go before the game, which is to the stadium. Either way, that route is beyond our means, I think. That that route really, that portion of the route has to be funded by IU, in the same way that BT is not going to do business outside the city without funding from non-city sources to to do it. It's the same principle.
I have one more, but I, okay. Very quickly, I, you know, we've been discussing this before, and that's the underutilization of peripheral downtown parking. And how do we incentivize that? So obviously, scaling fees relative to demand makes sense, but is it confusing? Are there communities where they do this, and it is, it's, it's effective? In other words, I park at a meter and I can expect to pay a dollar. But if you have this scale, scaling of $2, $1.50, $1, 25 cents, whatever, does that, does that become confusing and and chaotic for for people? In other words, complaining that, wait a minute, I thought I was, how much am I paying? You know, is it, is it effectively deployed in communities that you've seen?
Well, we've never done it, and we rejected it eight years ago on the argument that it might be.
In other communities.
Confusing. Oh, yeah, there, I mean, differential pricing, dynamic pricing is available in other communities. Lights out?
We're done.
We've lost our lighting here. But yes, it's a differential pricing is very common.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, thank you. Was that it?
Yeah.
Additional questions?
It popped in here, I had no clue that we were, is it the future?
Turn the lights back on.
I don't know.
Can someone turn the light switch back on to see if the lights come back on?
We get a little bit of daylight left.
Can you still see us?
That's a good question. Is CATS still able to to broadcast this meeting? Such an adventure. Let's go on. So are there additional questions for Councilmember Volin? If not, I have some. Councilmember Smith?
Thanks for the presentation. Councilmember Volin is great. I'm really in favor of a shuttle. The the thing that gives me, gives me pause is the number of riders that would use it. And so extending it over to IU, that's, that's great. And then I, I wonder, is there any possibility of running it out to College Mall?
Well, that's literally what all the other buses from Bloomington Transit do. They've already bussed out to the mall. The member of the East Side Local, number eight, was only at the mall, only operated north and south of Third Street, east of the bypass. But that is the standard of service for the Bloomington Transit. This is a different idea. This idea is rooted in the idea that people move their cars a few blocks because they don't want to walk. There was recently a gallery walk here where the Convention and Visitors Bureau ran a shuttle run by Go Express, and not a lot of people used it because they didn't know it was there, because they don't usually do that. But it was interesting to see how people used it, and I don't have a lot of ability to share what, I mean, I haven't had a chance to read thoroughly the report, but one thing I did notice was that, you know, people tend to not want to walk to places where there aren't a lot of other people already. So, or rather, they want to be, they want to be dropped off right in the middle of the crowd. They don't, they tended to not go to a location that seemed to be remote, and there wasn't a lot of people there. So, I mean, I would argue in general that a successful shuttle, if enough people use it, that breeds success, it breeds more revenue, more financing. No transit system is paying its full fare. The fares for Bloomington Transit cover a small fraction of the total cost. So any usage of transit is going to be met with more revenue from other sources.
Yeah, I think what was prompting that question in my, my mind was people coming from downtown, going to the mall, and all the new 700 bedrooms that are going into the Kmart development, which those folks, if they don't have to move their car to go downtown and/or maybe go to the stadium, would be fantastic, would be really helpful.
You're making a case for Bloomington Transit as a whole. I think that it already exists as well as it can, I can. What this does is it, it decreases the demand for cruising for parking, for people moving their cars only a few blocks, and for people who already say, now, I don't go town, downtown anymore because it's too expensive. This removes that block. It says, listen, I mean, when you go to a festival or you go to the stadium for a game, you may be walking a long distance without even thinking about it, because so many people are going there at the same time, too. This is a way of alleviating that concern and doing it at a price that meets every budget.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? If not, I'll take it, yeah?
Well, I mean, I just have comments. I don't have questions.
Oh, okay. If not, I'll take a turn. Thank you for the very thorough presentation. It's impressive. And I agree with you that success tends to breed success on this. I'm curious as to what, how you envision the initial steps toward public awareness going. What mechanisms might we use to gather public feedback on when and how and where this gets implemented? What mechanisms might we use to acquaint the public with this resource?
Well, Bloomington Transit itself has some experience in this. Remember that part of the initial capital costs were not just shelters, but signage. So Bloomington Transit would itself be promoting the service that we find funding for. But I also think that this is something that everyone will benefit from, and organizations like the Chamber of Commerce, like the Convention and Visitors Bureau, will be happy to spread the word, here is a new service. I mean, for me, if we use parking increment financing, the one thing I want to see wrapped on that bus is paid for with parking meter revenue. It's a way of saying, look, here's a tangible way to see that your parking meter money isn't just going to any old thing, it's going to a specific thing that is helping you get around. We're not using the money for general fund purposes.
Okay. Thank you. Additional questions? Oh.
The rest of you. What is the council's sense of whether they'd like to have 20-minute frequency and, you know, this many miles of service, or 10-minute frequency, but half the distance? I know that Bloomington Transit's preference, I mean, as much money as this is, it's still only so much money. And I can go back to the map, if that will help people to to talk about what they'd like to see. But I know that Bloomington Transit, last night, that the board generally said that they tend to prefer frequency over distance and routes, that it's more important that what service is provided is so frequent that people readily use it, and that a 20-minute frequency, as positive as it sounds, is a little while to wait. It might diminish the the benefit of it. The downside of that is maybe we don't connect the Trades District garage, maybe we don't connect the Hopewell garage with that much less distance served. And so this is a conundrum I can't answer. This is one of the things that we, as a council, would have to be able to answer in order for the administration to want to make a proposal. Are there any thoughts from members about their preference? This is one of the things that we, as a council, would have to be able to answer in order for the administration to want to make a proposal. Are there any thoughts from members about their preference?
Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, thank you very much, Councilmember Volan, for your presentation. In response to your question and looking at the map that was in our packet and that I think was part of your presentation, I feel strongly that a frequency of 10 minutes would be required. I don't think it's going to be convenient for anybody to wait more than 10 minutes to, you know, go such short distances downtown. And looking at the map, I would say, I would cut the part that goes into the IU campus. Unless IU is going to come forward and put in a chunk of money for that, I would end it at the Sample Gates or Seventh and Indiana. So that would make the route shorter. The route as currently indicated does not go to the Hopewell Garage, which I think is, there's a Hopewell extension, but if we don't use that, it doesn't go there. So, which I think is fine for now because it'll be a few years before there's any activity at Hopewell. So I don't, and given the vacancies at the other garages, I don't see that it's necessary to go there at this point. So that's, and I wanted to also say that I think one route is much preferable to two because I don't see anybody wanting to change buses. So if I'm down at, you know, Second and Walnut, and I want to get to the Sample Gates, I don't want to have to change buses, you know, go two minutes on one bus and three minutes on the other bus. So I would just do one circulator that covers that territory. So that's, those are my thoughts.
I want to add that there is another variable here, which is, well, how many hours a week should it operate? Night owl service would be useful for a certain clientele, early morning service for another one. We should definitely consider a nominal amount of service on Sundays to get people to and from church downtown, but that would be a relatively inexpensive add-on to implement. But we can also adjust the number of hours that are served by the shuttle. Does it need to operate in the early morning? How late at night does it need to operate? Any thoughts?
Councilmember Rallo.
Just to say that I think a functional trolley system, you know, the answer is prototyping and then optimizing from there. So my hunch is that a smaller route with greater frequency would be better, but the BT director and board have the most expertise. So I couldn't presume to know, you know, that we would probably be testing certain models and finding out which got the most usage and had the best preference.
That's what they said, too, that that's their general preference. It's more a matter of, we need to adjust these three different levers to figure out what will be the good, optimal beginning.
Yeah. I think the Saturday extended route is really a good idea, though, just from my experience of people trying to get to Antan and to visit restaurants and various things and campus and so forth, but having a hard time doing it. And this could be a real boost for that.
That's also a function of the cost. Again, we see that the increased average cost of, or average duration of stay is showing that people are staying lo, fewer transactions, people are staying longer, but parking thrives on turnover. So the most popular spaces need to be raised so that people have an incentive to go to the less popular spaces that are cheaper, and the shuttle would remove any objections that they might have to using it. But also, the question would be, oh, yeah, and also Friday and Saturday, the demand for parking increases with the day of the week. Friday and Saturday are tied for the most in demand. So Monday's the least in demand, and Friday is a little bit more than Saturday anymore. But both of them are at the highest demand of the week.
Additional questions for Councilmember Volan or comments? Councilmember Sandberg.
The creed dollars, of course, have now been rolled into the general fund. Have you had a conversation with the administration about their willingness to cede these creed dollars that I completely agree belong in the downtown? What's your take on?
Yeah, I haven't had a direct conversation with the administration, but I do know that they are interested in this discussion. They, like I said earlier in the presentation, they don't want to make a proposal that council wouldn't support. And so in the same way that we do a resolution in order to get the plan commission to make a change to Title 20, so this is the first step that I could think of to say, well, okay, here's what we want, and then they can come back with a proposal that we would like. Just from my request, they prepared the spec sheet that I used for this presentation. That was all from BT. They're doing the math and, you know, thinking about how they would make it work. So I didn't make those numbers up. I got them from BT.
Additional questions or comments? We haven't even gone to the public yet. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Thanks. Thank you, Councilmember Volan, for all of this. And it's a lot. So I guess I'm also wondering, like, what point you want to get to tonight, because I think that you are asking a lot of questions. So if you don't mind letting us know if you just imagine that we'll, like, table this until after recess or what. I, just some questions that you asked, I think the maximum of 10 minutes would be really important here because I don't think people will wait long for a shuttle, just thinking about, like, King Street in Alexandria. Shuttles come pretty often, same with Denver, 16th Street. I think what is really important is nighttime service, if that's possible, and I'm talking about, like, really late hours. I would like to ask, whatever happened to what students commonly referred to as the drunk bus? It was around when I was in college, and just wondering, who provided that, yeah, and where did it go? I think, you know, we had a drunk driver kill an IU student, and it's a very serious thing. Most likely, she didn't have a different way to get home. So I think trying to prevent that is really important here, you know, along with alleviating congestion downtown and all that good stuff. So those are just some questions back at you, I guess, about this. Thank you.
Thanks for the question. First, I just want to make sure everybody knows that the person who was killed by the drunk driver was not themselves drunk. They were operating a scooter legally in a bike lane, as they were supposed to. So I don't, I hope we don't, I mean, that person may not have had an alternative, although the so-called drunk bus might have served that sober student, too, if that was the way they could get home. Having said that, I, you know, agree that nighttime usage is important, as important as daytime. I wouldn't any more prioritize day or night. I would say that, that from my reading of parking data, generally speaking, it leans slightly towards evening use after 5:00 p.m., but I think that they're equally important. I think what the parking data by week says is that downtown is very much a destination for visitors anymore, more than the original contemplation 20 years ago of the creed, which was industrial, trying to get commuters downtown and businesses there. Bloomington has become a tourist destination, and not just people out of town. I mean, Bloomington's downtown brings people in from all over town to eat at restaurants, to go to shows. So I think it's really important that we do both. I don't know whether or not it should go till 3:00 in the morning. Again, every bit of distance we add, every bit of frequency we add, means we have to reduce hours of operation. So one thing, I mean, if there's one thing I would ask of members is, Bloomington Transit, again, is planning a corridor study for Third Street, going to be hiring a consultant. They could add a downtown circulator to their studies because it would, it would interact with an express bus going all the way across town. So it's a timely question for them, and I think if council could demonstrate either tonight or in an amendment, that they would want to see this studied as well, then they could, I mean, the funds for that should be something that we can budget for. But I think that would be the next step, is to get a study done of the downtown, of the prospect for a circulator. I hope that answers your question.
Councilmember Rosenbarger, did you have additional questions or comments?
I did also ask, I guess, what the goal is for tonight.
Well, okay, I mean, just, I'm just trying to get a sense of whether or not it's even worth pursuing. I mean, it's clear that no one supports it as it is, and I'm perfectly content to have it postponed. I want people to have an opportunity to write amendments that express the will of the council.
Councilmember Sandberg.
Well, I get the intent is to just send a signal that this is something that's desirable that we would all want. I think if we're going to try to micromanage it through amendments, I'm not sure that's appropriate because I think, as Councilmember Rallo indicated, it's BT that are kind of the experts in how this would be executed, when the best hours of operation, and how that would all, you know, lend to the cost. But I think if our goal tonight is to just send the message to the public at large or the administration that, yes, this is something that's desirable, I think we could go ahead and vote on the resolution tonight, just not the micromanaging details. That's, that would be in the works for a much later discussion.
I very much appreciate that observation. I will say, though, that if there's one clear preference that's come out of just discussion, this discussion alone, it's a preference for frequency over distance, and that is exactly the kind of thing that Bloomington Transit's board needs to know. Because if we had preferred distance instead, that might go against their grain, but that's what they would have respected.
I would agree with that, and also start small and see how it does, and then we can expand as the, as the market indicates.
Thank you.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith, and then I'll take a turn. No, go ahead.
Councilmember Volan, what, what is the, are we under any time crunch for this? Is there, I mean, the budget for 2024 is being prepared now and will, you know, be prepared and worked on by city staff and BT staff until the end of August. Is this something we need to keep in mind as far as allocating funds for 2024? If you're talking about a study, then we might not know how much we would need to appropriate for 2024 until that study is concluded. So I'm wondering about how you envision the timeline.
I mean, I don't think I have that luxury to envision the timeline. I'm just taking the next logical step, which is to say, we should do this, and we should study how to do it. That would have been inevitable. I mean, we wouldn't have just built a shuttle. We would have studied how to do it. We would have asked for a specific proposal from BT. But because they're planning a corridor study anyway, I think, I mean, that was something that came up only in the past couple of days, that I knew about that. So I think that's certainly the next thing we could do. So Councilmember Sandberg's idea that we should just approve it tonight to send the signal that we want to see that happen, that seems appealing to me when I, before I just thought, well, we should amend it to be more specific. But, you know, I think that would be fine, too.
Thank you.
Additional comments? Oh, go ahead.
Well, you were...
Yeah, I'll take a round. Yeah, I'll take a turn. Thank you for this presentation, and generally, I'm very supportive of what I've read here and in agreement with a lot of what I've heard in terms of frequency over distance and so forth. The one thing I find myself thinking about is hours, and I think that's an interesting question, about when will, when will this resource do the most good? When will it be most helpful to us? And I find myself thinking about the IU Auditorium and its shuttle. It runs a shuttle, a circular route, from parking garage to parking garage to the auditorium, from parking garage, you know, to the auditorium, on event nights, for want of a better term. And so I'm wondering if, rather than a blanket extension to evening hours or a blanket extension to Saturdays or what have you, we can do so more selectively, at least at first, and look at event weekends of one kind or another, when a shuttle like this would really make a difference, or a circulator like this would really make a difference at night. So I would just offer that thought as well. But again, I appreciate the work you've put in this, so.
I would just say that my concept for this ends at the corner of Seventh and Woodlawn, and anything beyond that, I think, is incumbent upon IU to help with it. I mean, if we can integrate the money they spend on the shuttle for special events, and I don't know that we would be able to handle that capacity unless we actually took the downtown shuttle and made it 60-foot buses or whatever the regular buses for the purpose of that event, which is what they're already doing. So I don't know how that would work. That's totally Bloomington Transit's...
And just to be clear, I'm not suggesting this circulator take on responsibility for getting people to IU events. What I am suggesting is that philosophy of having this resource available on event nights as opposed to other times.
They are going to parking garages, too. It's the same use case as the stadium. It's big special events, and this is a mechanism for getting them where they want to go, which is generally after the show, even before the show downtown.
Yep. Thank you. Councilmember Rallo.
I'm in agreement with Councilmember Sandberg that, I'm happy to support this this evening. It's Councilmember Volan's resolution. If he wants to postpone, because we're down two council members to have unanimity of the entire body, I'd support that, too. Or if more specificity is required, but I'm happy with more of a general resolution as it is and have the specifics worked on by people who have that expertise.
As the sponsor, I'm fine with that, too. I think, again, Councilmember Sandberg's idea was right, especially because I'd rather that we assert our interests before budgets are finalized, because I think that we should be hearing about this in the coming budget.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions or responses to Councilmember Volan before we go to public comment? Okay. In that case, let's go to public comment. If you are here in chambers, and that seems rather sparse at this point, but glad you're here, please feel welcome to approach the podium. Mr. Lucas, can you extend our invitation on Zoom, please, for comments on Resolution 2310?
Yes, if there are persons in public that would like to comment on this item, please let us know by using the raise hand feature or the chat feature to let the meeting host know you'd like to speak.
And let's begin here in chambers. If you would, please state your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Madam President. This is my second time to the podium. It's Christopher M. G. from the Chamber of Commerce, and I just want to commend Councilmember Volan on his presentation and the use of creed fund for activities that it was created to do, and that was to promote the downtown area. And I think that's, when I first came upon this body, it was now, I guess, a year ago to use these creed funds, as they were intended not to get lost in the general fund. I don't have, we don't have an opinion necessarily on this circular, but it's something that I think should be looked into and something that could be a big benefit to the downtown area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Lucas, do we have anyone on Zoom?
No.
Okay. And seeing no additional further comment here in chambers, let's come back to council for additional questions or comments. Councilmember Rallo. Councilmember Piedmont Smith, then.
Well, just to say, I know that Councilmember Volan's been advocating this for 15 years, probably. I know that Councilmember Sterbaum was interested in this idea, too. Others usually came up at budget time when we were discussing BT's budget, and the director of BT at the time, Lou May, expressed an interest, but was lacking the funds. I think that this is a very good utilization of the creed funds to launch something like this. I think it's useful for optimizing parking. I think it's very helpful for bringing vitality to downtown businesses and restaurants and so forth. So I'm very much in favor of this, and I appreciate Councilmember Volan bringing it forward. I'll be supporting it.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yeah, I am excited about this possibility, and I'm in support of the resolution. One other comment about possible decisions down the road is that the late-night service, you know, it's not all or nothing. It's not, we have the service until 3:00 a.m. or we don't have it. I mean, we could have it until 1:00 a.m. I mean, we could have it until 1:00 a.m. or till 2:00 a.m., but only Friday and Saturday nights, you know, things like that. So there's a lot of nuance there, and I think that, I'm confident that we and the BT board, while engaging in public outreach, we could, we could come up with a plan that I would be very happy to launch, and then, of course, adjustments can be made in the future. So I think, I appreciate Councilmember Volan bringing this forward, and this is an exciting first step if we can show the mayor's administration that this is something the council would like to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Volan.
First, I just want to thank everyone for their willingness to express their ideas tonight. It's clear that we have some challenges trying to balance obviousness with complexity. We need both. The shuttle needs to be clear how it works, but we also need to be using a scalpel and not a cudgel to make it work right. I do think that I was encouraged by the willingness of council to entertain differential pricing for meters. I think that even if it doesn't fund everything, parking meter revenue is going to be a very important, it's going to be important for us to commit some amount of it to helping with the service. Once we figure out eventually the parameters, like how often it should run. But I also think what we can do, based on this conversation tonight, is recommend that we get back a recommendation of stages of service where we'll start with this and that if we get more money or it's successful, we'll, this will be the next phase that we plan and that if people know in advance that here's how the service might expand if it's successful, I think that would encourage people to support it, not just members of council but members of the public. So I appreciate all the encouragement that I've heard, and I certainly endorse the passage of this resolution. I think the, the next step would be to ask the, I mean, I'll be, I think the, a positive vote here should send the message to the administration that, yes, they should give Bloomington Transit the extra money they need to include a downtown circulator in their imminent corridor study with their consultant. That's certainly the very next step. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Resolution 2310?
Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Rosenberg?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
And Rollin?
Yes.
That passes 7-0. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all.
So we have no legislation for first readings tonight, so that takes us to our second of two periods of public comment. If there is anyone in chambers here, please approach the podium. I'm seeing one person. Mr. Lucas, can you extend our invitation on Zoom, please?
Yes, if there are persons in the public that would like to comment, please let us know by using the raise hand feature. You can find that in your control bar under the reactions tab or the more tab. You can also send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak.
Welcome. Let's begin here in chambers. Mr. MG?
All right, the third time, Christopher MG, not of the Chamber of Commerce but as a resident of Sunny Slope, and one that I'd wanted to comment on, the sanitation that was sort of punted last week, that I did not comment, just to reiterate one of the opinions I had, which was, as we enter budget season here, I think getting a proposal on that that makes everybody unhappy with a, maybe a 25% increase that kind of goes toward the increased costs that Mr. Wasen went through. But it also brings up a larger point where I just don't think either the council has a sense of what our books here look like on, on the state of the city. We did pass the lid increase last year, so there is that additional revenue. But what are our, you know, what are our obligations? What, what funds do we have? And I think that's going to take an outside auditor, and when's the last time that's happened? I know that's not the purview of the council to do that, but a resolution that supports that, that gives us citizens a sense of, financially, where we're, where we're at. And we're going to have a new administration and a new council come January, and I think putting them in the best situation to succeed is not a bad idea to look into. So I thank you for your time and good night, and we'll see you after recess.
Thank you, Mr. MG. Mr. Lucas, do we have anyone on Zoom?
Not that I see, no.
And seeing no further comment here in chambers, let's come back to the agenda. That'll close our period of public comment. Let's come back. Mr. Lucas, matters of council scheduled for us?
Quick items. The first is a reminder that the council will be on recess after this evening's meeting. Our next scheduled meeting is July 26th. I believe that's the last Wednesday in July, so we will see you in five weeks. I also wanted to get a sense from council members. I believe you all may have been invited to a meeting of the Hopewell Steering Committee next, next week on June 28th. That's next Wednesday. I understand there's a public meeting from 3:00 p.m. to 4:30 p.m. with a reception to follow that will be noticed as a CBCI board meeting. If enough of you are interested in planning to attend, council staff can notice that as a possible council meeting as well. Wanted to gauge members' interest in that and see if members were planning to attend.
Three.
Seeing three, and I know we have--
Plus potentially Councilmembers Flaherty and Sims.
Councilmember Flaherty, I believe, will be unavailable, so it sounds like we won't have a quorum. Thank you for that. That's all I've got.
Okay. Thank you. If there, yes, Councilmember Volan.
Note, I have tried to send the slides that I just presented, but because of the animations, it may be big or unreadable. So if it's unreadable, I'll resend them without the animations. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for the good of the order? Councilmember Smith?
I want to know from Councilmember Volan if we can call it Ollie's Trolley. Just kidding.
And with that, we'll see you on July 26th. Have a good evening. We are adjourned.